I'll call to order this meeting of the East Hampton Planning Board for Tuesday, September 5th, 2017. Is there anybody here that would like to speak to something that is not on the agenda tonight? All right. Moving right along. We have no planning board minutes from our last meeting yet. We'll deal with that next meeting. So we'll jump right into A and R for Lynda Carrier, 14 Strong Street. Is there someone here to speak to that? Go ahead. Tell us briefly what's going on here.
Yes, please. Linda lives next to her.
If you hop up there to the podium, then we can at least get your voice on there.
Say your name for the record.
Anne Perizzo, Attorney Anne Perizzo. Yes, Linda lives next door to her mother, and she's just acquiring a piece of land to make her a lot larger.
So parcel A is coming from the top to the bottom. You need to walk over here. We can just get a clear idea here. Now that I sent you to the podium.
Get your steps in today.
All right, so parcel A is coming from here? Coming from up here?
Yeah. So parcel A is coming from here and going to this lot.
Okay.
Yep.
To give it the frontage and to give it the right.
Yeah, just to make her get more buffer between the two lots.
But it needed 120. So it's got it to 122 and has 7,500 square feet.
So what's going on with the, what's happening here? Is that a parking area or shrubs or what is that? I can't read it.
Linda, I don't know what this is on the plan. I know this is a draw pull, you know.
Garden, so the garden is now being.
Yeah, so that will be, I don't know if that's your garden anyway, but. It's so hard to one, yeah, I was gonna say.
There we go.
That's what, that's your garden, right?
Yes, that's what I wanted. I wanted the garden, this garage, but I had to be off 25 feet of this garage, so we couldn't just go straight back. So, yeah, I wanted the two Mabels in the garden on this side.
So you just included that. Okay.
All right. Planning Department, have any comments, questions?
No, it's making the lot conforming now. It was non-conforming before.
Is there any concern about the parking area being on both lots or?
It's a turnaround area.
Not for us.
Okay.
There you go.
Cool.
All right, anybody, Planning Board members have questions, comments?
I motion to endorse the approval not required for 14 Strong Street and Lynda Carrier.
All favor? Aye. Close, standing. All right. We're there for a date today. Yes. Jessica needs that.
I have, I think you provided two copies if you need that one. I think I already have one.
What am I doing here?
You can take my alarm one copy for me.
There we go.
And the rest of the copy to the city.
Okay.
And you only need one more, this one signed?
I need two signed, one for planning, one for clerk, and then the rest of it.
All right. All right, moving on, old business. Continued public hearing with City Council for zoning amendment, seasonal cottage community.
Are you getting a motion to open our?
So.
All favor?
Aye.
We're open.
All right, so I think one of the things we had, we discussed a lot of changes at the last meeting and also asked for a map from the Planning Department. I think either two and a half or five acre parcels within the downtown business, highway business, neighborhood business, and mill industrial, which we got from the Planning Department. So, I don't know, anybody have any comments, questions based on the revisions?
I have hard copies here if anybody needs them. While we're doing papers, does anybody need the latest copy of the zoning as discussed and changed on the 19th of July? It's in the extra stack this way, and then we have them for members of the public if they need them.
So what I find interesting about this is that basically the properties that would be in question for this are all up on North Hampton Street or in the mill area. For the most part, with the exception of, you know, a couple outliers.
Well, and so this was for evaluating whether it would be possible to sort of eliminate from the residential zones as we had originally proposed, or the original draft had it, and put it just in the business districts.
Okay, so this does not include two and a half to five or five and over.
No, I think we had that map from the last hearing, and it showed that. And I think there was a question about whether there would be sufficient space or areas where it could be, if we wanted to limit it to just these zones instead of the residential stuff.
Well, I mean, it shows that there are, you know, potential properties. Whether these are all viable properties is another question.
Well, also, I think one of the things we had discussed at the outset was the idea that the point was to sort of have a place for outdoor recreation, and when you put it in the highway business and the downtown business and stuff, it's not entirely that kind of a setting. I mean, I don't know where all these lots are, but from the few that we sort of know, it's not quite the same concept, but.
Well, there are a few along the rail trail, which, you know, does have that active recreation. But whether these are actually buildable lots, I don't, I'm picturing them in my head. I don't see them as potentially buildable, but that's not for me to know now.
I'm just gonna go out in a limb and say that I feel this, the 2.5 acres is too restrictive.
The 2.5?
Yeah. I don't think we've got enough space there to make that viable.
Can you repeat that? I just couldn't quite hear you for our notes.
I think it's too restrictive.
Restrictive for?
Anything between two and a half to five acres, so you're looking at five acres or more?
Well, yes, or just more than 2.5. Yeah, I think five, but I mean, I want to split hairs, five.
Well, yeah, because this is parcels between two and a half to five, so.
You think it's too restrictive to allow them to, to allow someone to do it on?
There's not enough space here.
In, because of the zones that it's in or because of the size of the lots?
Ah, the size of the lots, I think.
Okay.
The other map I recall looking at had a larger selection, if I remember correctly.
Yes, but it was, it included the residential zones.
It did.
Yeah, but so it was the same, I think it was the same lot sizes, it was just in different zones.
So it's the zoning I'm referring.
Jessica, the other piece of information we're hoping to get is the stuff about the residency for schools. Were you able to have that conversation?
Yes, so I talked to Dale Doran, who is the business manager at the schools, and she essentially said if a student spends more than 50% of their time during the school year at a certain location, then they are considered a resident. And then there's whole different criteria when it comes to homelessness and, and that's a whole different. But if somebody was simply to reside in a certain, in this particular address for more than 50% of their time, then they're considered a resident and can attend the schools in that district.
And I think looking on the state website, what I saw was all you need is like mail that proves that you're getting your stuff here, and so I don't know that it would matter how long somebody stayed here, if they made the intent to live here and started getting their bill sent here. It doesn't matter if it's two weeks or two years. That's my take on it, but. Anybody else on the Planning Board or City Council have any comments or before we open it up, see if there's public comments?
Well, I know that at the end of the last meeting, we talked about trying to mitigate the impact to adjoining properties.
Yep.
And I'm just wondering if any of that made it into the revised, or do we need to discuss that further as far as what that would look like? You know, modifying setbacks or, you know, barriers or whatnot.
I think we left it that that would be something that we could discuss tonight for other options. Because the original one had sort of the buffering and the setback.
25 feet. The lighting was discussed.
Yeah.
Solid wall fence not to exceed six feet.
Right, we talked about additional, so on the page three or four of Jessica's, the draft regs is the items to discuss, and one of them is.
Do you want me to show up the draft regs for the screen or are you done with this or not?
Yeah, I think that'd be good. Let's move on to the draft language.
Should there be additional buffer requirements for sound mitigation or other possible nuisance issues? Yeah, so on page three of this, there are items open still for discussion.
Right. And the buffering that was already in the statute goes from the bottom of page one to two there. Item six there at the bottom of one.
The other items to consider. I'll check out what you're looking at.
So Salem, there is that provision in 10.028 about lighting being shielded, so it doesn't cast light on the adjacent property or public ways.
That seems pretty good. Yeah, I mean, so just initially, I mean, I think this is an interesting map. I still think that there's, there's ways to still have it in residential areas and protect the neighbors. But we'd have to work on it to make sure that it's, there are enough buffers, whether it's fences or, you know, thicker screens, vegetated, vegetative screens or whatever it needs to be.
Right.
To make it a little less restrictive so that not, it's not just all potentially in this, in the North Hampton Street area, which is a pretty busy area. But that's just my initial thoughts. I'm open to, I'm open to debate on this one for sure.
Yeah.
Are we suggesting something along the line of putting the map back to include the residential that were there before, but then for those residential zones, increase setback, increase mitigation?
We could do any of those things, right? So, I mean, I think this was sort of an informative map to see what it would look like in that, in these zones as opposed to the residential.
So the question is what are the things?
Right, and so we could also, I mean, we can also have different standards for each zone. I mean, that's certainly something we could do as well.
Right.
Can I say something here?
Please.
I totally disagree.
With what?
With putting these in residential areas.
Under any circumstances?
Under any circumstances. Zoning is there for to protect the individuals that own homes. If someone wants to live in a home, they don't want a business next to their home, and they'd be building in a business zoned area. So, a typical example is somebody building some homes in an area, they figure never what happened is the people on that clap street. They build those homes on that clap street, never figuring they got an empty field next door. How a brewery ended up here? Well, how did a brewery end up there? Because it was zoned, manufacturing, residential. So if somebody moves into a residential area and there's a lot next door to them, there's always that chance a house could be built there, but it's a house, it's not a business. Zoning, if you're gonna allow this to happen, then why have zoning? Millers have a Wild West, can put anything, anything anywhere you want.
Well, I think what's.
And you can soften, I mean, you can soften the, you know, it can soften anything you want. You can put a buffer, you can do this and that, but it still isn't gonna take away the fact of putting this business into a residential area. I mean, that's all I see.
I think that's, I mean, I think one of the things that was interesting about this and kind of unique is that it sort of falls somewhere between like an apartment building and a hotel, right? So it's, it's kind of, in, I think of it as in a little more of a gray area personally, but I think you're, you're right that it's not, it's not strictly residential because people are not moving there for the indefinite future.
Well, I was thinking about this guy out here, he works on his home, he gets his home all set, ready to go, he's retired now, wants to sit back and kick his shoes up and sit back on his front porch and watch the cars go by. And all of a sudden, now he's got nine cottages, no more than 100 feet from his house, and there's all kinds of music going on, cars driving and all. He's not sure if he's gonna put up with that.
What if it was an apartment building?
Can you put an apartment building up in a residential area?
Yeah.
You can?
Absolutely.
That's the part that, I mean, it keeps coming back. But, yeah.
Campground by right, right? I mean, you could put a campground there right now.
Right. You can do these cottages as a nonprofit organization right now, but I think you're right. I mean, I think that's the tension we're dealing with is how to do that.
I agree.
It's, it's a circle.
I mean, it's a tough, it's a tough road to home. You need, you know, I'm not against it because you need it really for to have people come into the city and stay overnight and all that. But you gotta be careful what you do with it.
Yeah.
Balance is the key.
Yeah.
I've given it a lot of thought since the last meeting, and I must say, it would be very nice to be able to have a way to place a business, a motel, something where people can stay in East Hampton and be available to shop downtown. It's all very attractive, and that's why I had hoped that we would find some parcels with, within the mill industrial or the downtown business or the highway business zone. Because as the Board of Health Department agent said, Commonwealth of Massachusetts defines this kind of property as a motel. And if it's a motel, our zoning calls for motels to be located in highway business areas. And that's why I would hope that we would have some parcels that might work and be a little larger than the traditional motel. I think a motel wouldn't need five acres. But Jessica, if I'm reading the map correctly, just to go back to the map for a second, it's the green section that has five acres, right?
Uh, right, so.
So there are 15 different parcels that would qualify with, with five acres. If I'm counting the greens correctly.
Yep.
And if you add the yellows, which brought it down to two and a half, that comes up well over 20, 20, 22 or something like that. But at least there were 15 different parcels that you could do something creative with and have over five acres in a business zone where motels belong.
What does it mean by potentially vacant land? It's actually, we don't know if there's an owner for it? We don't have an owner on, a deed or?
So potentially vacant, so there's different categories in the assessors. And I have to just, I have to look and get a sense of which of these.
Okay. Don't kill yourself over it, it's okay, it is just.
I know, so. Trying to get my bearings here a little bit. So there's either wetlands potentially, like these are wetlands right here. You can't see my mouth, actually, wait a minute. Rattler's a pointer.
Doors are locked.
See if it works.
Yeah, it won't.
Oh, I should check the batteries.
Is that coming?
Rats. Thought I was being smart. Okay, so, see the little hand? So like there's wetlands here. To some extent, some of these have, they may have environmental constraints.
My fear is that, and I want to preface by saying I really agree with what Harry said, and I think you're justified because she did say it was motels when she came up. I think those are all true statements and things we need to be concerned about. But my fear is that then we go ahead and say, yeah, we're gonna do this, it's gonna be great, but we've actually created a scenario where no one can then do anything with it. We've zoned it out of possibilities, off actual buildable places to make it possible in this, in this map. And that, for me, is just as bad as going the other way. You know, I, we need to come up with something that works, and for me, this just isn't quite there yet.
And I also think, I mean, this isn't the Wild West because we are here right now discussing this.
Right.
And this is where we mitigate the impacts to the neighbors. This is where we find potential problems and try to solve those so, you know, someone who's trying to relax at their house isn't disturbed by, you know, something that could potentially bring a benefit to the city. I mean, this is, the buck stops here, you know, so no Wild West hopefully if we do our job.
Right, and I also think that, you know, the residential, it's not like there is another business that goes on in residential zones, either pre-existing or new stuff in home occupation and things like that. Or as we've said, you could put this in as a campground right now. I mean, I think to the extent that it's, that the Health Department thinks it should be treated as a motel, and that's in business district, it's only in business district because the prior City Council and Planning Board decided that's where it should be, and it doesn't mean that we can't change it if we put enough safeguards in place. So whether we can create safeguards that work is the question, I think, but.
Technically, an Airbnb is a motel, right?
Right.
But those are all over.
Right.
So if we were going to, just for the, you know, add back in the residential, keep the criteria and setback we have for everything else, but add an extra layer for residential, would that be an increased setback? What other kinds of ideas are there? You mentioned something I didn't quite catch before of possibilities that we could do.
Well, just that we can do different standards for different zones. I mean, one of the things we discussed is a different, a different lot requirement for different residential zones. And we were talking at the last meeting, you know, whether you would have a different minimum lot size depending on which residential zone it was because the lot size requirements are different. But, I mean, there's no reason we can't have different requirements for, certainly between the business and the residential, or buy-in amongst the different residential ones too. What that would be, I don't know. I mean, we can certainly, you know, make more of a setback or require more plantings or fencing or things like that.
Or density. I mean, I think density is a big one.
Yep.
So density setbacks, you know, shielding, you know, it seems like the lighting is already taken care of. I mean, that, that seems pretty restrictive and.
Right.
So, but we can kind of brainstorm those as we go, but I think density is a big one.
Yeah, I think so too.
So what do we have right now with density?
It's based on the proximity of the building, so it doesn't, it's kind of what the lot will allow. Do people mind if we open this up for public comment? Was I handed here earlier someone? No? Oh, I'm gonna click.
Fire zone?
Yes, please.
Hello, everybody.
Good evening.
Not to complicate the matter, but when I first heard about this, I thought it might be.
Just identify yourself first for the record, just so we.
My name is Michael Gargen. I'm a resident, I live in Seven Fairfield Avenue.
Thank you.
I, when I first heard about this, I thought this might be an interesting opportunity for the city to really do something for senior citizens that's very visionary and doesn't cost the city a penny to give freedom to senior citizens. And most senior citizens, I hadn't thought about this until I became one, but if I could build, or any senior citizen could build, a separate living space on their own property and have waivers from property tax so that they could rent the primary residence out and live in their facility, you would free people up from the hassle of retirement, fixed income, and the constant erosion that they're seeing in income. And you would build a base of income from them that would also correlate with the inflation so that they could feel secure on their own property. Doesn't cost you a penny. If that senior citizen sells their primary residence, but the building is still occupied by a senior citizen, that might also maintain the waivers for property tax. And I think that would begin to help construction companies build smaller facilities or smaller living spaces in the back of homes. But certainly, I think it would help senior citizens survive what I think is coming with this economy, to tell you the truth. So that's, that's my input. There's something to be thought about, I mean, there's details, of course, the devil's in the detail, but I thought if we just plant a seed, that might be an interesting thing to think about.
Thank you.
Is that even what we're, is that even, is that relevant to what we're talking about?
No.
It's not really that we're talking about.
It's kind of a different wrinkle.
It is. It's interesting. I like, I think that's an interesting idea, but it's not.
Well, Jessica, is that something that could already happen under the current zoning with the accessory building?
Sure, somebody could build, I mean, there's no waiver from property tax.
There's no waiver of the tax. It's not there yet.
Right. But you also, doesn't the property owner have to reside in the principal residence under the accessory building, or is that not true?
There was no discussion that I recall saying that you have to reside in the principal residence. The person could reside in either the accessory or the principal.
I think that as long as they live.
If they live on the premises.
On the premises? I think that was sort of the intent because we had this idea that people may want to build an accessory apartment and then rent out.
For themselves.
Right, the primary to generate a rental income and live in the smaller of the two units, so.
Speaking as a gerontologist, I know that's a very popular and upcoming trend. They actually call them granny pods, where they would build another building in the back that you would have a single residence. And, and it's been marketed more from the perspective of a family having their senior parent move to them and be able to have their same privacy. But I agree that that's a very different wordage and very different thought concept than a seasonal cottage for recreation. They're very different in my mind.
I understand. I thought it would just be an interesting entry point.
Uh-huh, definitely.
It's interesting. Anybody else have any comments at this point?
Hello. My name's Mindy Cotherman, I live on West Street. First of all, I actually want to thank you guys for being willing to have these conversations over a period of months. Second, I actually want to address what keeps coming up is loud music, bonfires, partying. I don't think that that was, actually, when I raised the thing, that was not my intent. I think that what I would like for you all to do is be forward-thinking. Not everyone wants to be in the crazy. People want peace and quiet. I want peace and quiet. I don't allow any radios played on my property. My neighbors are here, I don't think they've ever heard a radio. I would, obviously, this has all come about because it's something that I want to do. I would not allow that on the property. I'm looking for snowbirds to come up, like the gentleman Christopher said. Come up, my grandparents lived in our driveway in an RV when I was a kid growing up. I don't know how my neighbors felt about that, but I certainly have more privacy on my property than the person 20 feet away from us when I was six years old. But that's really what I want to say. I would like for you to be forward-thinking. I would not want to stay in a motel downtown. I'd probably go to North Hampton, Hotel North Hampton if I was gonna stay in a hotel and be able to walk around that town. So I'd like to, for you to break the mold of what has been traditional and, and think of other options. I think it's why Airbnb has been so successful. And, anyway. I do want to say something because most of my neighbors are here. I did buy this property to do some kind of lodging on it, so whether it's a campground, which I don't think is exactly appropriate, if that's what I'm left with, that's what I might want to try to do. Or a traditional bed and breakfast possibly as well. But I was trying to think of something that would be forward-thinking, that would create privacy, because that's what I actually think people want these days. I think they want to binge-watch TV, close themselves in, and escape the world, not go out into a really beautiful place and create a party like people used to 20 years ago. Thank you for your time.
Everybody?
Please.
I'm the guy...
Say your name again for the record, please. Say your name for the record.
Oh, yeah, can you give your name one more time for the record?
David Poe, 134 West Street.
Thank you.
Right, sir.
I bought a piece of property on West Street, eight acres, eight-plus acres. It used to be part of the Touchstone, okay? The remainder are her property. When I I got a good price on it, but I've got privacy. And I've spent about $200,000 rebuilding an 1812 house, all right? Something you don't see anymore. And I bought it because it was for the peace and quiet. It's a beautiful spot. When I bought it, I did my due diligence. Touchstone concerned me very much. I mean, it had a bad reputation. I used to live in the area and work in the area, I knew all about it, I heard all the horror stories. But I was aware, when I bought that piece of property, that nothing goes back there. Yeah, you could put, you could have put an auto parts store back there. I don't think it really would have flown. I didn't see how it would be economically successful. But I was aware that camping was possible, okay? And I told you this the last time. It was possible as a nonprofit. The people who ran this town before you guys, the planning board, the councilors, had the foresight that in a residential neighborhood, if you want, if you had a lot of open land and you wanted to utilize it a little bit, but not for economic gain, nonprofit. Now, this whole season, okay, so I bought the place in 2013. And I've been working on it ever since. I work in Florida. I have, I am a licensed general contractor in Florida, okay? I've been in the construction trades for 40 years. That's why I, it bothers me when you guys start talking about putting up to 12 new buildings on a five-acre lot. That's way too dense, all right? Now, and I, there's, there was never any talk of a seasonal cottage until the owner of Touchstone Farm probably felt pressured. I'll tell you a story. Not last year, the year before. When Mindy bought the property, her partner in the property, it's just over five acres, which is a coincidence that we're talking about a five-acre lot. She asked me if she could bring her partner over to my house and look at my property and what I have done to my house. Because she was, she had, she bought, she invested the money sight unseen. She comes out, she's got a beautiful five-acre piece of land. But how is she ever going to get her money out of it? So Mindy bought, brought her partner, I think her name was Allison, over. And I had to show her how you could turn horse crap into honey, okay? Takes a lot of work, takes a lot of money. Now, she, so my opposition to this is because there's 48 acres that qualify under your, um, five acres, right? In residential. Why are you, why are you guys focusing on residential? I've got no clue. You don't need a for-profit company in a residential neighborhood. If I would have had a vacant, I knew they could build houses back there. When I bought my property, there was an approved 14-house subdivision, okay? And the last thing I did before I closed is that the people at Coal Construction I bought it from had to go to court or had to come to the fourth town and withdraw that 14, right? I would rather see 14 houses on that combined 13 acres than a bunch of transients coming in and somebody operating a for-profit. And I just, for the life of me, we've got one piece of property, one property owner driving this whole seasonal cottage. Has any of the other 48, six people that haven't contacted you guys?
No, we're still, nobody even knows what we're doing.
You have to speak up. I have a concussion, I can't hear.
We don't even have a bylaw yet.
It's not even relevant. That question's not relevant to discussion. We are not talking about one person, we're talking about a bylaw. So your question is not relevant.
You're basically talking about one piece of prop, one property owner is driving this.
Well, no, it's really not. It's mostly, it's the inability to have, hold, hold on. The, the concern that was raised at the outset that we've sort of attached on to here is the lack of any sort of way for someone to come to town and spend a night, a week, a short-term period of time. And so that's sort of what we're looking at. I'm curious about what you just, can I ask a question about what you just said? Because you said you'd rather have 14 rental units on that parcel than have...
14 homes.
Pardon me?
You'd rather have 14 homes on the property?
There wasn't approved, and recession hit, and the state gave Coal Construction and, and, um, Touchstone, a, a three-to-five-year extension. Then Ted Cole died. So the money went out, they got in trouble, they sold. And it already been bankrupted.
Right, so my question, so what part of, I mean, that doesn't seem like it would be a less of an impact on you as a neighbor than, than a seasonal cottage?
14 houses on 13 acres, you got almost an acre. And it's really, an acre is good size, all right? But you're talking about twice a city lot, okay? It's still not that private. Can't do it now because my acre, because my acreage went down the dingle, okay? Into the wetlands. But you could, it, it allowed them to build a little more densely because you had the open space. It could never happen today, okay? But when you're talking about, you, you say there's not one property doing this, but we were in a meeting where Touchstone Farms brought in an architectural drawing with 12 buildings on it.
Right, so I don't know what that meeting was, and it certainly wasn't here. There's no bylaw that they can build under right now. So what we're talking about is a citywide bylaw that would enable anyone who owns a lot that qualifies.
If, if, if Mindy had not been encouraged, why is she going to an architect, and I would assume paying a fee, to have plans drawn up even though they're, you know, they're temporary, unless she didn't have some kind of inclination that she was going to get this approved? And her acreage is just a tad over five. And you guys are going to, like, like JP said, when the woman that worked for the Board of Health said that they would, the state will classify this as a motel. Because you are throwing away your strongest tool in your toolbox, the zoning, you're going to allow dense construction with no road frontage.
Okay, so my question to you is this. So if, if there was some sort of construction on that property, what would be the kind of buffering or density that would make it feel more...
It's residential.
Hold on, that would make it feel more like a typical residence that's on that lot?
Build houses.
Okay, but so the...
Not, not, not housing for temporary people. People who are not invested in the neighborhood.
Okay, so your problem is with the temporary, your, your problem is...
My problem is that you're getting, you're throwing away your zoning.
Please, please, wait and let me speak. So your problem is with the temporary nature and the seasonal cottage itself as opposed to the size of the structure or the density?
And the for-profit, in a residential. Put it in the business district, that business, for-profit, business. You know, it's not a, it's not a hard concept. Residential, like he said. If you've got a vacant lot, if you don't buy, let me finish. If you don't buy the lot next door, you can't complain because somebody bought it and built and allowable, you used it as allowed under the zoning. I bought my property, you guys are changing the game.
Okay, sir, so I understand your objection at this point. And I think we all understand what your problem is with the project. So I think we're all set.
Okay, I hope, I hope you might take it under consideration. I'm just saying, it just...
We, we understand.
This is being driven by one property owner, and you're going to affect hundreds of people.
Okay, thank you.
I, I, I feel like I really need to respond to that. I'm sorry for taking the bait, but I'm going to. It's not, it's not one person driving this. One person brought it to our attention, as this might be an option.
No, stop, please.
I, that's my turn to speak, thank you. So one person actually brought it up as a potential. We considered it as a citywide potential, not for that one person. And I'll go back to Jessica's example about Small Oven. One person came to us and asked us for the particular zoning, and it was not in the zoning bylaws. But we went through a process and we made the zoning bylaws so that Small Oven and businesses like Small Oven could come in. And it was a wonderful, wonderful opportunity for the city. This is exactly the same situation. Mindy is not driving this. In fact, this is the first time she's spoken to us in months. And she did not come with a property, with a plan. She came with an idea. And we have been talking about that idea. That's it. So I appreciate your comments, but I want to be clear on that. And every time you say that it's driven by one person, I'm going to respond like that.
And I, and I won't respond like I have.
Okay.
It came out of somewhere.
If I, if I may?
Yes, please.
I'd probably shed some light on the plan. A plan was presented to the ordinance subcommittee that did contain a number of, of, of structures as a, as a potential possibility. Nothing definitive. So I think you should know that before the city, there was a plan that was presented. As I recall, it had about 12, 12 structures on this particular site at 134 West Street. Just, just so that you can say, you're saying nothing's been presented.
Yep.
It has. So I think it's clear that we're talking about a specific site for this.
Except, except we don't even have...
As the impetus.
As the impetus, but not as, not as it relates to writing bylaws.
In fact, the site wouldn't even qualify under some of the things we're talking about. So this very thing, I mean, one of, the map we're looking at today is just in business districts, right? I mean, we're not crafting a bylaw to fit her project. We're, we were given an idea of a concept that we sort of took the ball and ran with it. And so that may have been the thing that first brought it to the table. But it's certainly not a project to make sure that she can do what she wants to do on her parcel. That's got no sort of bearing on this.
Right, okay, catalyst, but catalyst is a better word. But that's, isn't that a...
We as a planning board never received any plans or any, all we got was an idea. And she just brought it forward and...
And that's our job, isn't it, as a planning board to consider it?
And we took the ball and ran with it. Whatever plan you people had, never came to us.
Right, it, it, that's, Jim's right. It, it doesn't really matter how the process started, where we are in the process right now is what matters. So is there anybody else that has any other comments or questions? Come back up. I, I mean, if it has to do with your project, I don't think it's really relevant. We're really talking about the process generally and the bylaw in general. Is there anybody else that has any comments about the draft bylaw or the, yes, please?
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Susan Moore, and I live in East Hampton. And I've never been involved in any of this until one Sunday morning this summer. I happened to turn on the cable access channel, which I have not turned on for five years. And the June 6th meeting was being televised, or June 16th, and I was horrified. I was absolutely horrified. I was shocked and dismayed. And I was told as a citizen, it was my responsibility to keep in touch with whatever you guys are doing. I respect what you do. I mean, you step up to the plate, you're representing us, thank you so much. Maybe more of us should be doing that. But I'm very, very, very upset. I do view this as summer shacks. I do view this as having tranchants. I've gone to a prep school. I don't think prep school parents are going to want to stay in a summer shack. Sorry, Mindy. Mindy did indicate, did indicate in the Springfield paper that she wanted to have a campground. And when she was told that it had to be a nonprofit, she wanted nothing to do with it. Well, I think Mindy should have researched the property more before she purchased it. She can always sell it.
Okay, but let's, let's really not focus around this.
All right, okay, I'm sorry, but I'm not in favor of this at all. And I think it's going to open a Pandora's box and a can of worms.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can we have an address? I'm sorry, what was...
...on Metalwork Drive, which is sort of a buddy.
Thank you.
So...
Yes.
I, I've received some correspondence, and I was told that you, you all did not receive it. Would you mind if I read it into the record?
That'd be great.
Okay. It says, "G'day, I'm writing in support of the proposed amendment to your zoning code that deals with seasonal cottage communities. I support this zoning change because of several reasons. This fits in with ongoing regional work to develop tourism in the area. My wife and I run a successful bed and breakfast and are heavily involved in developing low-impact, environmentally-friendly tourism. The proposed change is before you fit that definition. There are no hotels, motels, bed and breakfasts, or even seasonal cottage communities in East Hampton. There are several Airbnbs, but since those skirt the law in several ways and provide zero benefit to your community, I will not get too deep on those today. Along with some high-profile East Hampton residents, I serve on the Board of Directors for the Hampshire County Tourism Council. These East Hampton residents are working incredibly hard to make your community a better place through tourism development. Here's two questions for you. Do you know that the longest interstate rail trail, bike trail, in the northeast US passes through East Hampton? Do you think it would be a benefit to have families stop and stay overnight and experience more that East Hampton has to offer?" And that was sent by Craig De La Penno. So I actually forwarded that to Jessica so she, she could forward it to you all.
And he's a, who, is he a resident of the city or...?
He's a realtor.
He's a local realtor.
He's a bike advocate, he's a rail trail advocate. He's been around for a long, long time.
Okay, not a resident of East Hampton.
He's not a resident of East Hampton, he's a resident of Florence.
Okay.
One thing that I'd like to bring up, considering the way Mother Nature is treating the country lately. I know that we have this down sort of for a seasonal thing, and we really haven't addressed much by way of usage during off-season. But in the event of a large fire that displaces numerous families or something of that nature, if we're going to have something like this, it would seem to me that under those circumstances, there ought to be some sort of provision whereby the mayor, the city council could waive the restriction for time limitation during off-season. Otherwise, what's the point of having a hotel?
For an emergency. There was a mass migration, a flood.
Exactly. I mean, if there's an emergency and the people of East Hampton need emergency housing, then I would think that if we got something available, we need to have that.
I mean, this would almost sound like these kinds of facilities would help with something like that. Be that they're there now.
Well, they wouldn't be of help.
Would.
Would.
It's fascinating. I'd like to toss something in, and I don't want to bypass that. I think that's valid, I'm just not sure what, you know...
Well, I just wanted to throw it out there for consideration.
Yeah. The 10.04 in our proposed draft, page 204.
Hold on, please, let me pull it up, so that everybody can all have a look.
Thank you, Jessica.
Pausing now. Technical, yeah. Graphics. No circles and arrows. Okay.
10.04?
10.04. We're talking about common open space. And I wonder if one of the things, I'm just tossing this out there. One of the things that we could do, if we added residential, some of the residential we had in the previous map back in, would be to, for those, the residential-only zoning, to change the minimum of 30% of the total parcel to something more akin to 50, which would dramatically reduce density, which again and again, this gentleman right here at the end brought up, and I think is a very valid point, is that density is a big concern.
Yep.
It also, in 10.3 above it, talks a little bit about density as well with no greater than 800 square feet. But I'm not sure that we should tweak that. I mean, maybe someone has a different idea. It seems to me that the 10.04, open space, seems a, an opportune place that we could adjust residential to reduce density. I'm not sure 50% is the right number. That might be discussion worthy, but that seems like something we could do.
I mean, that does seem like a way to impact the density you can put on a parcel.
It definitely does. And you could also have a, a greater buffer of, of green space or fence or whatever that might be beyond the 20 or the 30 feet or 25 feet, whatever it is.
25.
To create more of a, or less of a usable area, which will make density, you know, which would reduce the number of units per site and provide privacy and less impact to neighbors. So there are ways we can certainly do it. I do actually go back to Harry's comment, though, that this is a business. And I, I'm actually, I've been thinking about that a lot myself, too. And I don't, I don't know if it's right to have it in a residential neighborhood. I mean, I, it's, I'm, you know, you're trying to put yourself in other people's... I mean, I, I live in a very dense neighborhood, so I have people on top of me. I don't really care, but some people that do, I mean, they really do want to have their privacy. So that's something to consider.
I mean, they really do want to have their privacy, so that's something to consider.
What if we upped the density to 60%?
I think at some point, you're putting so many...
We're just playing with numbers now.
At some point, we're creating a bylaw that no one can comply with.
Right.
And it's sort of...
That's my concern, too.
Only for show.
You try to make it economically feasible, to build something.
Well, that's one of the things we talked about, right. And we talked about that in the context of the fencing or the solid wall, where that may be something that a property owner wants to opt for. But if you're somebody who's got an eight-acre parcel and make them fence in the entire thing, that's going to be, I think, prohibitively expensive. So, there's things like that, we're sort of dealing with it.
I have a couple of thoughts on the, you know, the business piece. You know, I mean, there's a lot of businesses in East Hampton that are run out of people's houses.
Yeah.
You know, landscapers, for one. You know, parking in the main street, and if that's your neighbor, that's, could be potentially pretty disruptive. You know, people that are hobbyists and are working on a car in their front yard and running it all day, you know, have a, you know, a yard sale, basically. What can you do about that? You know, someone, your neighbor could Airbnb their house. And they're running a business next to you, but it's, you know, they're skirting. They're getting around, you know, the systems in place for us to be able to have a say. You know, so this is us being able to have a say.
Yeah.
I live in a residential neighborhood.
Just to comment back on what Counselor Derby just said. A car, whether you're a car hobbyist or a landscaper or an Airbnb, you're within your 35,000 square, let's say R35 zoning, and there's one house. There isn't the potential of five acres, and now you have 10 or 12, 15, or even six places that are impacting your investment. So, I see it as a difference if you have one neighbor of equal lot size to yours doing something that, maybe I wish he wouldn't, you know, fix his card on Saturday all day, but hey, you know.
Well, what you're doing, I mean, the other one that it's more comparable to is some of the home occupation stuff, where there are people coming, people who are selling stuff online or doing lessons or whatever, and you have traffic, like heavy traffic, people coming in and out of the parking lot or the driveway all day. I mean, I think that's the sort of stuff that is more of an impact appliance and people who say, you know, this was just a residence when I moved in, and now, you know, somebody's...
You get those complaints.
That happens, right? So, I mean, I think that...
And that's why I think you're having a group of people saying, hey, this isn't, this isn't for residential neighborhoods.
Right.
We don't want this, what this proposal is. Because it's like having businesses...
But, I mean, those are things that people can do, and they get permitted for, and they're allowed to do them. So, I think some of that is like the inconvenience that you just have of living in.
You run up a great point, too, in terms of the 35,000 square feet and keeping it sort of symmetrical to what the zoning already is. Where I'm at, it's between a third and an acre and a quarter acre per parcel. It's fairly dense. I've got several neighbors that do work. It's loud, I just love them and embrace it, and it's part of what's beautiful about East Hampton. You know, I think it's a good thing. But why not then just modify the density to match that? If you're on a R35, keep it so that there's roughly that many of these cottages per... I mean, that's all we really have to do is limit the density. Put them in, but limit the density so that it matches the demeanor of the neighborhood.
I mean, that was kind of what I was trying to get to with the, you know, whether your objection is with sort of an over, a frequently overturning population versus the number of parcels and traffic. Because if you just put, you know, 14 units or houses as a subdivision, and that's the same thing if you have them staying in each house for a week with the same sort of density and stuff, that doesn't seem to be a difference in impact on a neighborhood. But how you do that is the question.
Just for this kind of specific scenario, what I think Mr. Pogue was saying is that his parcel of eight acres plus the five-acre parcel that would qualify under the potential zoning.
Oh, no, I got that was the scenario he was talking about.
And that's the, where you got 14 houses, not just on five acres.
Just to be clear, that was a cluster subdivision proposal. So, all of the houses were clustered on less than a half of that property.
But utilizing the whole space.
So, there was, but there was open space that, there was open space for... I have to go back and look at the files for the exact numbers, but it was a cluster subdivision. So, the houses were clustered together towards the front of the property, and the back half of the property was set aside for protected open space.
Right. But so, taking the example of five-acre lot, at some point, you could subdivide that and put residences on it, and it would be the same, it would meet the qualifications, and you would say, we can fit five houses on this lot, or whatever it is. And that's going to add a certain amount of, not inconvenience, but you now live in the community that this is what someone who owns that lot can do. And whether you make those independent houses that can all be resold or rented, or whether you make them as seasonal cottages in the same exact layout and the same density requirements, it doesn't seem to have an impact just because someone's coming for a week versus someone is going to buy that and live there.
It's like, no.
But that's, I mean, I think that's one way to think about it.
I think it assumes that all parcels are equal, and they're not according to their shape.
Right.
Some parcels have some potential that really don't accommodate frontage for five lots.
Sure.
And yet, they have five acres.
Yeah.
So, a sharp person looking at it would say, geez, you really can't draw out five house lots out of this parcel. So, I don't have to worry about there being five house lots.
Unless you can build a road.
Unless you build a road.
Subdivision regulations, and you split the frontage off the new roadway, not the...
But if you have a stretch that goes back, that only has 80 feet, you're not going to get, you're not going to get...
Right, we can create lots that don't qualify. I mean, you can, you can have a five-acre lot, but if the whole thing is wetlands, you can't build on it anyway, right? So, I mean, there's lots that don't qualify, no matter what.
There are lots of different ways, wetlands and configurations.
And I think that's the hard part, is trying to construct a bylaw that would apply. Gardner?
Hi.
Hi.
David Gardner, 13 Plain Street. I haven't looked into this too deeply, but one of the things that occurs to me is, right now, as far as I know, unless I've seen it all wrong, on this one 35 acre, five-acre parcel, R35, it could have a campground with cottages, tents, whatever. If it were a nonprofit, just on site plan review. So, I'm wondering, what is the criteria you would use to review that? If a nonprofit came to you, would it be different from somebody who... Would the conditions be any different? You've got cars going there, you've got potentially kids every day, back and forth. You've got the same impact you're talking about, trying to mitigate. That's totally allowed right now. What would be different if it was marginally profitable or whatever? Would it be any different? I'm thinking it probably would not. I can't think of any circumstances that would make that different. And that's totally allowed right now. I also just wanted to point out something that's already been mentioned, that the difference between profit and nonprofit, that's... What kind of nonprofit are we talking about? Just any nonprofit? Just a nonprofit? There are all different kinds. You have nonprofits with people who are at the head of the organization making hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Yeah.
Nonprofit, total nonprofit status. So, we've already talked about how people run businesses out of their homes. That's for profit. Airbnb, that's for profit. What's different about that? So, that's all. I don't know why I'm hearing all the, you know, considering how to minimize impact for something that's totally allowed already. It's just the status of what the organization running it. So, that's it. I just, I'm wondering.
Thank you.
Where do I go? Got something to think about.
That was a mic drop.
That fell into place.
Anybody else? Comments, questions? Yes?
I see two very different issues. Maybe they correlate a little bit. But one of them is the changing of a more rural farming community and not wanting to see that happen in your backyard. And I can understand that. I can also see another tone when they use transients as uses. Who's allowed in the backyard? And I don't agree with that vein as much as the other. But this other one, where people have been living within the same place for a very long time because it's more rural, and they're opposed to any sort of development, I can respect that. We have had a traditional farming community here for a very long time, and we're seeing that become more and more roded. So, I can understand the concern that this is really going to change the landscape. Who's going to change that landscape? And determining the value of someone based on whether or not they're owning or renting? Have a little more problem with that because I think there are some more dangerous undertones to that. But taking, again, this first one, I haven't spoken to anybody in the community who feels that this would be non-disruptive to neighborhoods. Everyone who lives within a neighborhood, not the city center, but a neighborhood, they have these larger parcels. There's a lot of concern about it. And I really am concerned that we're not hearing that. We're reacting instead to the word transient and the offense that that is given versus rural versus more developed. And I think those are very different issues, and we have to be very clear to separate those two things out.
Well said. That is offensive, and it definitely strikes a chord, and it can distract from the other argument, which is important.
And that's, you know, that same argument is used for apartment buildings and for fair housing. So, I'm just, these are different issues that we're talking about. They're related, but I think on both sides, we're reacting to very different things that are going on here. And the fact is, is that a lot of these would be smack dab in the middle of residential neighborhoods. And these neighborhoods, we have a lot of vulnerable people that to hear anyone coming new to a neighborhood is a scary issue. During this time, when we have so much divisiveness within East Hampton, that becomes even more of a concern for people. And to pretend that that's not an undercurrent here, I think, would be a real mistake.
One question I would add to that, though, partly because it's confusing to me, is that, I mean, we just had a message come up with, well, we're not really deciding if you can do this or not. You can already do this. This is already here. You can already have these cottages in those zones. We're not deciding whether or not you can do this. It can already be done. These cottages, a campground, these kinds of things where they can go in and camp out and be there, and however you want to label whatever the individual is going or not, is not relevant. But they can go there, and they can do that in your neighborhood. There was a question as to, and I think it was a good one, what difference does it make if it's profit? Which is really what we're talking, I mean, that's the big change we're having. That and that we're adding more structures and limitations in than were there before, which I would hope you would see as a good thing because they don't exist. So, at least you have that as some form of limitation in place. I mean, that's a benefit to having something like this go through. Otherwise, it's, you know, essentially nothing.
So, could someone conceivably come in and build 10 cottages and call it a campground?
Cottages would probably qualify within a campground?
I think so.
I mean, I would recommend to those that have spoke adamantly against it, maybe you need to tweak the perception a little bit to realize that this is the process by which we put limitations in to what can already be done.
Would you like me to read the definition of campground in the zoning?
Please.
An area or tract of land on which accommodations for temporary occupancy are located or may be placed, including cabins, tents, and recreational vehicles, in which is primarily used for recreation purposes and retains an open air or natural character.
So, it can be called a cabin instead of cottage.
An RV, a cabin, or tents, right now.
Well, get your RVs ready.
So, it's been an hour of this discussion, and we have other items on the agenda. So, I'm wondering if the board would like to...
Can I put forth just a quick couple of...
Decide what the next step is here.
Yeah.
I personally would love to talk about it again. I think there's more to discuss. I'd like to see the residential put in. I'd like to see the open space for the residential move to 50%. Tossing it out there.
Yeah, we'll just have to keep, keep at it and come up with a... We'll have to have a positive attitude that this is where we're going, and if it's going to be 50% or 75% or whatever, we all have to be in agreement with it. That's the only thing.
And I would say I'd have to agree with Jim, you know, as someone who's kind of envisioning this for my backyard. You know, if this, because I feel like that's the fair way to approach this, is look like this would be going into my backyard. Like I said in the beginning, I think density is critical. And so, you know, this is an opportunity to be able to have a say because there was nothing in density. I mean, if there was a campground, would we have a say about density?
There are no standards in the zoning right now about campgrounds, at all. The only thing that the board would do is they would use the site plan review, criteria for approval, like we've done for any other business, and that's all that we have for baseline.
So, this is our chance.
This is our chance to set regulations that are going to mitigate the impacts on the people that don't want to be impacted.
Even if it is a nonprofit.
Right. Profit or nonprofit.
I'm going to throw something out that you feel free to shoot down. And this is probably going full circle. We could develop standards for campgrounds.
Right.
And then you have it for profit or nonprofit. And then at least you have standards to be working off of. Just to throw a wrench in the whole process.
It makes sense, like, because right now, we've just exposed an opening. I mean, we've just shown the underbelly of the dragon, and scale is not there. And so...
And to be, you know, and I don't know if this is true because this is before my time, and this campground provision has been in the zoning for decades. But my sense is that it may be in reference to the parcel that's at the end of Highland Ave that was once a Boy Scouts campground that the city now owns. We own that land, but it was deeded to the city from the Boy Scouts of America and still has some qualities of campground. So, I'm wondering if that's where it was just even in there to begin with because there was a campground that was in existence in the city, and so they wanted to...
If I can go back on that, if I remember right, going up there with my kids and that, that's where most of it started, was there at that Boy Scout campground. It was always called the Campgrounds.
So, Jessica, now that we sort of spent all this time on this complicated seasonal cottage community bylaw, is, can we look at some campground?
So, I, I don't know how the board wants to address this. So, either you'd need to make a decision, I think, to close this out and not move it forward and take that official vote with the understanding you're coming back to do something that's specific to campgrounds. And I only say that because the public hearing notice was specific to the seasonal cottage community, you know, all of that. I mean, I guess we could as part of, I mean, I don't know. It's a little gray to me.
Is it possible to do that decision at the beginning of our next meeting and put whatever notice that it might be a transition in the both? So, we have some time to stew on it.
Well, a public hearing costs money, and I need at least two weeks' notice.
That's a no.
Well, no, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm just thinking it out loud. Like, what's the, you know, so I have to, if...
So, we should try and make a decision today.
You would have to pull it together. You would have to have something that's available at the city clerk's office and the planning department for review so that people, if they're notified through that process in the paper, then there's a place for them to go and look at, whatever it would be drafted.
So, your suggestion is to close this out?
I don't know what I'm suggesting, I'm just throwing that out there to cause more confusion.
Your suggestion is to close this, what we're doing now, out and...
If that's what the board wants to do. I mean, I don't know exactly what the board wants to do. I'm not getting a good pulse there.
So, our scope would be then to define a, what is a nonprofit campground and what is a for-profit campground?
Well, no, I think, I think it would just be what...[1705.83]
No.
Because right now, there's none of this for campgrounds.
There's none of it.
So, I mean, that probably is...
I don't know. Yeah, it's a whole other category.
I mean, and I'd also say that another issue that we need to talk about at some point is the rental of rooms. Because Airbnb is under the radar and so there are communities that are tackling this and so, you know, that was partially why this was being crafted, is acknowledging that there are at least 40 rooms across East Hampton that people are renting through Airbnb that are not, you know, there's no health and safety being overseen on that. There's no rooming taxes that are being collected on that. So, you know, that's, so it's like a separate issue that needs to be somewhat addressed at some point. So the board has a couple of considerations. One...
The Airbnb stuff, we can set aside for now until we figure this.
Set aside. So there's a couple of things you could do. You could continue to work on this. You could vote to close this and move to do campgrounds for profit and nonprofit and set standards in place. And then that would mean that we'd have to be a separate category for for-profit campgrounds in the zoning somewhere in the table of uses and you could set that to be in commercial districts if that's what you want. So those are sort of the two options on the table.
Well, I think we can go...
Campgrounds can include cottages.
Well, per definition it does now. It has cabins, so...
It has cabins, which are...
We probably just lift a lot of what we did.
Yeah, well, that's what I was going to say. I think it's kind of like a mixture of those two things. Taking what we've done and then applying that to campgrounds and, you know, morphing that, you know, the specifics of the process as far as closing and opening and...
Yeah. Maybe that's too much. It just seems...
I hated the word phrase seasonal cottages. I never liked that.
I never liked swimming like cottages.
The truth comes out.
I know, right?
The praising never sat with me.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
Peg Con, resident. Question on the cabins, Jess. So, do they have to be, or do you know, or maybe that's what you guys need to do, do they have to be, do they have to have plumbing? Do they have to have running water? Do they have to have electrical and do they, no? They're all nodding yes.
Well, Karen here. In this one, in this one they did. This one they did. But a campground, I don't believe so.
As of today, there's no requirement for any of that. If you put a nonprofit campground in with cabins instead of cottages, there's nothing in there that says what they have to have or not have.
And a lot of the campground language that I looked at initially had provisions for the camp grocery store where people go and they buy their firewood and provisions and stuff like that.
So is that what you guys would have to define, like what a cabin would have to have in it?
Yes.
Similar to what we had before. You came in hating this, you're going to leave loving it.
I came in with no opinion. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's going to be worked out hopefully.
Jessica, if we were, I mean, I do think that Salem's right that probably largely this is what a campground bylaw would look like with some tweaking and language changes and...
I mean, we can continue in the same vein. I just don't want to...
Right, so, I mean...
I'm just being, I'm just being conservative.
Right, so if we, if we close this public hearing and then I guess technically we need to, as a planning board, agree on a new draft bylaw to then submit to the ordinance subcommittee to get back down here?
Mm-hmm.
Cottages.
If that's what the, if that's what you come to consensus on.
Campgrounds.
I mean, it's, you know, there's got to be consensus.
So what do people want to do?
Is there a way to repost the public hearing if we continue to repost it as the seasonal cottage hearing, or formerly known as the seasonal cottage hearing, to be known henceforth?
You know, I appreciate efficiency. I do. No, I get it because I think it's a pain in the neck too, but I think it's my due diligence as a professional staff person to make sure that, that it's clean.
I agree. And I think that in the big picture, the delay it may take of another month or something to get us back here for another meeting on this, it's worth it to make sure that we're giving notice to people who need it.
So what's the actual motion?
Well...
To close the hearing.
Just to close the hearing.
Close the hearing.
That's what you're deciding to do. I mean...
And then eventually...
And add to the agenda.
In the future, a meeting on...
We just close the hearing and when in the future...
So you would close this hearing and then in the next meeting, you would be a working meeting to, like we've done with this. We had months and months of working meetings. So we can take this as a starting point, but then start figuring out how it's changing.
Yeah, we'll go into more due diligence with it.
Discussion after it, but I make the motion to close this hearing.
All right, hold on.
Hold it.
Yes, please.
Kathleen Havler, 126 West Street. Can we as residents assume that, it's never good to assume, but can we understand that the issue of putting what is actually a business in a residential area is not what the people of East Hampton want?
Well, no. I mean, I think there are businesses that operate in residential zones already.
Yeah.
So I mean, I think that's part of what we're figuring out is what kind and under what conditions.
But it really doesn't matter. It's not going to impact the fact that this can already be done. It's already there. Anyone can come in and already do this, whether it's a business or a nonprofit. It amounts to the same thing. It's people coming in, it's cottages being built, but right now, there's no limitations on it. They can do a lot of different things, a lot less strict than what we had here.
I find it interesting that this issue was in the Gazette, which I was pleased to see, so that everybody in East Hampton who gets a newspaper, and also you can get it online, realized that this was being talked about. It was on TV, it was on Channel 22. I don't see droves of people in here saying, let's do this. This sounds great. Let's do this.
I mean, we've had, we've had plenty of speakers that have come in support in the last couple hearings. I mean, I think that that's...
But are they residents of East Hampton or are they people who can, who occasionally come to East Hampton and are disappointed that there isn't an official motel here and they have to go beyond the limits of East Hampton?
Are you against having this?
I'm against putting something that has the potential for a lot of disruption in a private, in a residential neighborhood.
So I agree with you. So if we do nothing, they can do that. If we do something, we put limits on it. So the question is, are you against it?
Well, I think, I don't know. Are the rest of you clear on what's...
Well, we're not pulling the audience here on this one, but, I mean, there's been people on both sides of this, I would agree, and I think it's generated a lot of interest for and against. I think there's been a lot of people that have come to speak out about it. I think, I don't think there's any dispute about that. We, I've told everyone here before, I mean, a lot of what we do, we end up being here alone and no one here to chime in on and we would always rather hear what people who live here think we should do. That's always easier than sort of making things up.
I think, sorry, I don't know your name. Smith?
Tamara.
Tamara. Tamara made some very good points about the particular issue of the cottages or any kind of facility that's going to be in a neighborhood that's going to allow people coming and going and that sort of thing. I think East Hampton is a unique place. I still want to call it a town and every time I have to write city, I say, eh.
Small city.
But it is a unique place and I don't think we're just a bunch of old fogies who just can't, you know, see things new and different and all, but I think that there's, there's a real respect about East Hampton and I think that that's what we're afraid is being overlooked here.
You have to remember, there's some old fogies on this board too.
I'm an old fogey too.
I want limitations. It should be limited.
I just hope it will just be done in a way that it doesn't change the true flavor of East Hampton and more, and the majority of people will be approving of it. I mean, there's not a whole lot of people here. It's a small sampling of East Hampton, but I...
I think what this board is trying to do, just that, the way it is now, we can go wide open. What the board is trying to do is put some limitations on what can and cannot happen. And we're going to go through another few months of discussion and trying to get this worked out.
I think that's underestimating it.
Probably the rest of the year would be better.
All right. Well, thank you very much. All right, so I'm sorry, James, you had a motion?
I motioned to close this open hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Okay.
Move to close.
All in favor? Aye. No, second is yet.
We'll be in touch.
Okay.
All right. Moving right along.
Easier portion of the hearing.
Come for the seasonal cottages, you stay for the recreational marijuana.
Take your break.
Yeah, let's take a brief rest here for a second. But, hey, what do you get on?
Stretch my legs. You can't light them, get up the remote.
Stand up, stretch.
I'm sorry about the elevator.
No, because I felt twice and I shattered my knee.
It hasn't been set yet. Because we closed that one, so the next time it comes back, it's going to be something different.
I can't, but not three flights. Because what I did originally, I went down to the basement thinking the elevator was working down there and I could take it up.
So I'm sorry, Chad.
And there, I had to go three flights, but it would have been nice if there was a sign that...
To get back up here.
So then I could have at least had someone throw a rope out a window and bring it up my toe roll.
They might need to, we don't necessarily, but I was thinking maybe tomorrow I can release you with prejudice. So if it does come back and, you know, with prejudice...
Well, I think we may actually have to formally terminate that discussion. We closed the hearing.
And you guys will do the camp...
It clears it from, it clears it from...
Chris will be very happy. It doesn't clear from them though.
I think that they probably, no.
They need to do that, right?
Yeah, we probably need to formally...
You needed to do a more formal motion than just close the hearing. That's what I thought as you were doing that.
Well, we closed the hearing. Now we can formally...
So we can make another motion?
You have to make another motion to withdraw it without prejudice so we can take it off the agenda.
So shall I retract the other motion to...
No, we still needed to close the public hearing first.
You said to close the public hearing first. You need to do that first, but then you have to make a motion to...
All right, folks, we're going back on the record here. If you guys can either quiet down or take the conversations outside.
I just want to get this from Jess. Something without prejudice?
Withdraw.
Withdraw.
All right, so before...
Everybody, really, we needed to be quiet in here so that we can pick up the video. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, so before we move on to recreational marijuana, James?
I motioned to withdraw without prejudice the zoning for seasonal cottages changes. Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I'd assume sometimes I have prejudice. I don't like that.
Now...
Just the terms, don't worry.
Moving on to the continued discussion on proposed zoning for recreational marijuana. All right, so, based on our last couple meetings, we had some changes to the draft bylaw and by changes, I mean addition of actual language, really.
Yeah, I printed mine out and left it on my desk. Do you copy?
I did. Hold on.
It's safe there though.
Yeah, right.
I might have only printed the map.
That's fine. This is good.
I think it's only, yeah, it's just that.
I have the map.
I didn't, but I can pull the, I can pull, oh.
I have the map.
I can pull it up on the thing if you need it.
I've got mine, thank you.
Do you guys need a map?
What do you need, Chris?
Harry will need a map.
The language, but I, but I'm sharing.
Chad, you need one?
Yeah, I need a map. I need your map.
All right, and so then the other thing that we got from the planning department is a map.
What do you want, the map or the ordinance?
Let's do the map first and you can explain what we're looking at with the map.
Killing me.
Sorry, Jessica.
You like killing me, Small.
You know what, throw the bylaw up one more time. I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
We have the extra maps, yes.
Would you bear with me a sec when I go in the back room and I just want to switch the camera so the public at home, when they view this later, can get a view of that map?
Perfect, James.
Fantastic.
Smart. I knew that we had you on here for a reason.
There we go.
The wish in the wardrobe or something.
All right, so Jessica, can you just explain to everyone what we've got here on this map?
Sure. So the assistant planner, Jamie Webb, she did this map. And what we did is we pulled up all of the public schools, the nursery schools, and I have a list somewhere of what those are, but there's like five of them. Daycare centers is what, really what we looked at. There's the charter school, the tri-county school, and Williston North Hampton School Academy. So those are all the parcels on the map and then surrounding those... Here, Mary, I know you want one.
Come on over, Mary. Go for it, Mary.
Is we've got different buffers. So the 200-foot buffer is in the pink surrounding those properties. The light green is the 500-foot buffer and then the yellow is the 1,000-foot buffer. So if you were to create buffers around of those parcels and we decided to select those parcels and then do the buffer from that parcel and that, it'll show you what other parcels it's capturing within that buffer.
Yep, really helpful. Thank you.
So, yeah, I think the takeaway is that the 1,000 kind of knocks out everything.
Right.
It does. It's too much.
So, and I think, you know, it's just, yeah, it takes out most of the industrial park and then, you know, I had forgotten about Arcadia School and so the Arcadia School kind of wipes out that other industrial zone by Four Hill Brewery with those parcels up there that are above the bike path. Those two farm fields are zoned industrial, so that kind of wipes that out too.
Well, the other wrinkle with this is that in the medical, it defined it and had that really broad language about where children commonly congregate, but the medical regs allowed us to drop it down to a more narrow distance and to define what those places were. We may or may not have that flexibility with the recreational. I think one of the things, at least I mentioned last time, is, you know, it's a little different than the medical in that the regs on the medical meant that it had to be basically an invisible vanilla building with no advertising, nothing visible, and it's a little different when you're talking about certainly a retail location. So it wouldn't surprise me one bit if we don't have the same flexibility, but I think that part of the process we're in now is assuming it's something comparable, having something sort of in place that we can fine tune and tweak as opposed to coming in on day one with a blank piece of paper. So I guess we're sort of operating under that assumption, but it's worth remembering that it, that it's a different set. I mean, this doesn't include that they, that we could never define places where children commonly congregate, but if that's karate schools and playgrounds and things like that, that would be a totally different map than this. So I guess it's just something else to keep in mind as we go forward. I guess probably I should read this Williston letter to the record since they, the planning board and the planning department received a letter from Williston regarding this whole process. So I'm just going to read this into the letter, so, or into the record, so everyone here has the same information we do. Dear Ms. Allen, I appreciate the thoughtful deliberation that took place at the most recent City of East Hampton Planning Board meeting on Tuesday, August 1st regarding recreational marijuana. The constructive tone that was apparent in all the presentations by the citizens and planning board members was gratifying to see. Reflecting on the discussion that took place that evening and reviewing the information from that meeting with the administrative team at Williston North Hampton, we would like to provide some recommendations to be considered as final regulations for recreational marijuana are established. We understand that bylaws need to be updated by March 15th, 2018. These are in no particular order, but we order this list of recommendations for your serious consideration. We agree that the existing ordinance 10.9 for medical marijuana should be edited and updated to reflect the changes necessary for recreational marijuana usage. This is in lieu of creating an entirely new 10.10 ordinance and seems to be the most expedient approach. We would recommend that no establishment providing recreational marijuana to be licensed within 1,000 feet of the boundaries of any school. A guideline or rule should be provided for on-street recreational marijuana displays. There should be no overt public presentations, i.e. pictures of marijuana leaves, plants, et cetera. No individual under the age of 21 should be allowed to enter these establishments. The number of licenses should be limited in similar fashion to how liquor licenses are limited. As a suggestion, the number of recreational marijuana licenses should be no more in total than 20% to 25% of the liquor licenses in the city. There should be guidelines and possible restrictions on the concentration of the recreational marijuana sold in the city. There should be consequences for any individual found to be providing recreational marijuana to anyone underage, similar to the consequences for providing liquor to minors. There should be consideration given to controlling bad behavior due to people being under the influence of marijuana. Sobriety test guidelines should be defined. Within a recreational marijuana location, there should be guidelines for ventilation systems. These ventilation systems should not impose the smell of marijuana smoke on the general population or public areas. It should be prohibited for people to smoke marijuana in public areas. Please take these suggestions in the spirit they are intended. We understand that recreational marijuana is legal in Massachusetts. However, there are compelling forces at work. We have to be ever mindful of the impressionable young people in our community. We need to acknowledge the proven facts of the negative impact marijuana has on individuals under the age of 18. It is our collective duty to be deliberative on how we approach this significant change. In our opinion, at Williston, it is not in East Hampton's best interest to become a destination for recreational marijuana, but alternatively honor this change with measured steps. Sincerely, Charles B. McCullough, Jr., Chief Financial Officer. So. I guess, do we want to start off? Anybody have any comments based on looking at the map or the, I think, Jessica, are these definitions that we put in here basically just pulled from the bylaw?
Pulled exactly from the law as it's currently.
The statute, I mean, yeah, sorry.
Yes, age 38, 18, blended with the previous law.
Okay.
So I have two, well, a few questions. Medical marijuana right now is 200 feet?
Five.
Is it 500?
Uh, I've got the.
It was 500 in the state, but I think we dropped it.
It's 200 for us.
It's 200 for us, right?
Yeah, 200 feet.
But 500 for the state.
Yeah.
Are there distances for marijuana and cigarettes from schools and places where children congregate?
You mean alcohol and cigarettes?
Alcohol and cigarettes, sorry.
I don't know how that's done because it's not through zoning.
Okay, no worries. And if we decided to do, okay, it is 200, 200 feet for us. If we decided to, say if the state just said 1,000 feet and we wanted to do 500, the state rules, right, because they're more strict?
It depends. The medical one, they allowed us to modify and to reduce it, but we don't know that that'll be the case.
Okay, you had just said that, okay.
Specific language in the regulations that said that the local municipality had some local rule.
Okay, last question. This question that Williston, or recommendation that Williston has about number of marijuana licenses should be no more in total than 20% to 25% of the liquor licenses in the city. How many liquor licenses do we allow in the city?
So I went through this because in the law, it's very specific what type of liquor licenses. It's not just liquor licenses in general.
Yeah.
It's retail sales, right?
It's retail sales, and I think if I remember correctly, it was, we have four. So it says to limit the number of marijuana retailers to fewer than 20% of the number of license issues within the city or town for the retail sale of alcoholic beverages, not to be drunk on the premises. That's the key language. So it's not, it doesn't include bars. It doesn't include restaurants. It just includes liquor stores, basically.
Yeah.
And it only allows us to reduce it to 20%, right? We can't go below it.
It's approval by the voters, so the board has no authority on this whatsoever. This is through the voters. So there's four all-alcohol package stores. There's four wine malt, so a total of eight, so 20% would be two. So it would be limiting retailers to two in the city if the ballot initiative was passed by the voters of East Hampton.
Right.
But that's not.
That's, I mean, some of the things in this letter are not things that are before us anyways, and that's, I think, one of them that we don't really have a say on.
All right, that's a good, that answers my questions. Thank you.
So. Anybody have any other thoughts about the?
The map?
The map?
200 feet. It's the appropriate distance for medical marijuana has it. We're a small town. In order to get these things in places where they'll be viable, it's clear to me based on the map that 200 feet is the only option.
Now, what about the idea that it could be different for different uses? I mean, I think what I said before is, I mean, it's the retail component that I think has the strongest argument proximity to school.
Where?
Well, I don't know. I mean, that's what I'm wondering, but I mean, I don't know that it needs to be the same. I mean, frankly, for like a grow-only facility, I don't personally have a problem if it's in the basement of a school. I mean, it's, if it's going to be like the medical, it's completely secure. There's no odor. There's nothing. So that, to me, doesn't seem to pose nearly the same risk as a retail, which regardless of what we do for sort of in-window displays or advertising, is still going to have some sign that will make it clear to everyone in the public, including everyone over the age of 10, that they sell marijuana.
You just gave Mary the quote of the evening.
Yeah, seriously.
It wasn't that good.
Nothing.
So.
Watched out on that one.
Yeah. So, I mean, so my thought is, I don't know that, I mean, I'm not driven the same way for a buffer on depending on what the use is. And I don't know if that's making it more complicated than it needs to be, but.
I think it's a valid point. So, I mean, I think if I'm understanding correctly, what you're saying is some of what we would put in mill and industrial is less of a risk. You think that the buffer is less important than a retail?
Well, and again, I'm operating in the assumption that we all are, that the recreational regulations will be comparable to the medical and that it will be the same sort of secure grow facility like we have already over on Pleasant Street, which doesn't, to me, pose the same sort of risks that a buffer helps protect from sort of an everyday viewing of marijuana sale or something like that. But, so for me, that's less of a concern, but I don't know how everyone else feels.
Well, I feel that 1,000 foot is. It's crazy in the sense that it basically eliminates any areas for us, for a facility to open. I mean, there's almost no space with a 1,000-foot buffer. Originally, I was thinking, I was on the 200-foot board as well with you, and then I, you know, I read all the research and all the documentation for sample bylaws from other communities and cities and states, and they all have 1,000 feet. So then I was thinking maybe a, you know, like a medium of, you know, kind of a middle ground of 500 feet. Even at 500 feet, though, that takes out of almost the entire downtown.
They might, they might have to be at 1,000 feet because that's what their state law requires, and there's no flexibility in the buffer. And you also have to think about the scope and the scale of those states. All of New England is the same as the average size of another state in the United States.
Yeah.
So they're talking about vast, vast.
Yeah, and New England is very dense, and the schools all over every little town, including Boston, the schools just strewn everywhere. So you can't, I mean, I think even Boston would have a hard time with a 1,000-foot buffer around schools and to have any place that they could operate.
I can't imagine it's going to be any more than the, than the medical at this point.
Which was 500 at this stage.
500, yeah.
I mean, I do think that one of the things I would like to avoid is the idea of if we, I mean, presumably if someone thinks that there should be a buffer, it's for a reason, and if we think that an appropriate buffer eliminates too much of the town, I mean, I want to be careful about sort of looking at it and saying like, we think, if we all believed 1,000 feet was necessary to protect people, then if there, and there isn't a lot of space after that, I don't know that we want to modify it based on that, but it's sort of a balancing test.
But really hard because I believe there is no risk.
Yeah.
So the buffer shouldn't be there, but we're also dealing with perceptions. So, I mean, perceptions are important in this. The reason the buffer's there isn't because we're protecting anyone. It's not protecting.
Right.
Because there's no risk.
Right, I mean, honest, let's be honest, if a kid, or, let me rephrase that, if anyone wants to get to a facility, whether it's they have to walk 200 feet or 500 feet from a school, is not going to deter them if they can legally buy it.
Oh, yeah, and I don't think the buffer is designed to make it a longer walk for a kid to, or someone to go to the store. I think it's, the idea is sort of the constant exposure that sort of normalizes or encourages to a 16-year-old that this is something that goes on, and that that's something that is inherent, you know, it's how accidents always happen close to your home, and that's because you drive there more frequently, like you're going to be walking near your school more than most other places presumably, and that. So I think that's the logic behind a buffer. I don't think it's like to double the walking time on your lunch break.
I have a 14-year-old.
Not to belittle that, but I think.
And a 17, almost 18-year-old in a couple of weeks, both in high school. I do think that, especially in places like Springfield, the alcohol, the signage, the proximity, the kids walking by from school, it's a problem. I don't like seeing that here. I don't want to see that here either. But I think signage accommodates that. I definitely think that cannabis is a negligible risk in comparison to alcohol, even though we're doing a lot considering them the same. 200 feet, given how small we are, but allowing that buffer to still exist, to acknowledge the fact that we're putting our feet in the water on this issue. We're working it out. I believe there's no risk, but I'm willing to say, look, I'm going to work with you on it because it's the right thing to do. 200 feet is the right number.
Regardless of which use it is.
Regardless. Well, I mean, I'm open-minded to you, but I think 200 across the board covered, you know, it just does.
Do gentlemen have thoughts about buffer at this point before we open it up?
I think the 200 is. It's not enough. 500 may, you may think be too much, but 200's a.
So you're leaning more towards a 500 than a 200?
Right.
Carry thoughts at this point?
250 or 300? Does this be one or the other? Going to be?
We can make, I mean, assuming we have the flexibility, we can pick. 229.
Exactly.
What, 299?
We'll put it this way. Somebody's got a six-pack of beer somewhere, and they had to walk 200 feet or 500 feet. It's not going to matter.
Right.
Right.
I know what Jimmy's saying about making it look, you know, restrictive, but.
Yeah, I mean, and that's something easily done. I mean, the fact is, is that no one's going to be able to get into the store if they don't have a valid ID that shows they're 21 and over.
I don't think there's any reasonable concern that someone underage is going to be able to get into one of these places and buy something.
That's not even the concern.
It's the normalization.
I think it's the normalization and the encouragement where you're sort of seeing, I think, seeing firsthand retail. I'm not necessarily endorsing this as my own belief, but I think it's an argument that is out there and is something that's unknowable, right? And so if you, if we're sort of left in the situation where there is a prominent retail facility that's right by a school and people are seeing people going in and out, in and out, that that may be the concern that someone has.
Well, if the majority, if they want to go with 200, I would.
We don't have to decide right this minute. I'm just wondering what people have for initial thoughts so we can.
I mean, I literally know stats on this, but I would think, this is just me just spitballing. I'm just going to just say it. All right, you're walking down the street and you see a sign for cigarettes. Does that make you want to smoke? Or is, did you smoke because your parents smoked, or it was really cool in the ads to smoke? You know, the, same with alcohol. You saw your parents growing up and you, you know, for me, I was making my parents drinks in the kitchen when I was 10, you know, while they were, while they were playing cards with their friends. That's how I learned about what drinking was, and it wasn't necessarily because I saw a really cool ad about Scotch, you know. Think that, I don't know if normalizing stuff by seeing a green cross on the street is going to make a kid want to smoke or buy an edible. I don't, but I don't know. I don't have any, I don't know if it makes, if the buffer really is going to really deter people when they turn 21 to want to smoke more or less, or want marijuana more or less.
Well, I also think that a buffer is often a weapon that sort of forces of opposition use to limit options. So I think that in the same way, we don't want to say, well, 1,000-foot buffer means we can't put anything anywhere. Even if we believe that was safe, we can't do that. You also don't want to say, well, let's just put a buffer in. We'll allow it anywhere other than places where it can actually go.
I will note in the law, under Section 3, which is all about local control, and all it really says at this point is that to govern the time, place, and manner of marijuana establishment's operations, da-da-da, except that in zoning ordinances or bylaws, shall not operate to, one, prevent the conversion of medical, two, limit the number below the limits established pursuant to Paragraph 2, which is all the voter stuff. So I think that they, you know, it's this unreasonably regulate what you're getting to. Like, you know, they're very cognizant of, of communities potentially drafting something that just can't be used.
Right, right. So you said, we don't have the votes to outlaw this in the town, but we're going to pass a bylaw that allows it anywhere you want as long as it's not within 1,500 feet of a residence. I mean, that's what people have tried before, and that's what people have done. So I think that that's definitely like part of the.
That would get challenged.
Right. Okay, does anyone have anything else before I open this up to? Anybody want to come on up and talk?
Bring it.
Preferably if you have comments on the buffer concept, that'd be helpful, but anything at all.
Hi, everyone. My name is Kareem Marisk. I spoke at the August 1st meeting. I'm the young lady who's coming to represent opening a business cannabis coffee house in East Hampton. I am an East Hampton resident. I live at 38 Everett Street. I did offer some, I was the one actually who mentioned the 1,000 buffers at that meeting, so maybe I wish I had had it. I would like to point out actually in Seattle now, in another rec market, that I'm, I've been looking at. They're having, they have 500-foot meters, buffers, and they're actually coming into a problem where their density is so thick that it's becoming prohibitive for retailers to open up. So this is an issue where, especially in dense areas, and I think it definitely applies to East Hampton. I recently bravely left my job at the largest medical marijuana facility in the state to pursue the stream of opening a cannabis coffee house. So I'm bringing in the retail, the experience of what's working and what's working well. The company I worked for did very well. But some of the things that I can address in terms of when I was sitting here before with the Williston folks and also, you know, the youth coalition, some of those issues are definitely also already addressed in the law. For example, the signage, the obfuscation of the windows. I want to say that I am, I mentioned I was a parent last time. I'm an East Hampton parent. I have a child who goes to Center of Heaven. And so that is very important for me. I want to protect that. I want to protect our children. I don't want to invite them into cannabis houses or retail shops. But I think it is important to think, I have also been really thoughtful in looking at the East Hampton Consumer Survey that was done in 2013. I looked at the future community development plans as well. And I think the 200, if you hit the 200 buffer, foot buffer, and I was doing it with my own, you can just about leave enough room in some of the businesses in the small downtown area on Cottage Street and Union Street. If that is indeed part of the plan to revitalize some of those areas, I found a lovely property that's right next to, you know, India Palace. It's within 200, you know, feet, that potentially could be a place, for example. It has room out back for, you know, smoking, and we talked a lot at the previous meeting about things like hedge buffers, ventilation. I want to be a responsible business owner for that matter, socially responsible, listen to anyone who has any issues with this. But in regards to zoning and the buffers, I think it really does open up a lot. It's also really a social justice issue that I am very passionate about. I'm coming as a female minority small business owner. I am not one of the monopoly people, and if you look at the other markets, including our own, the people who own marijuana facilities have very large bank accounts, well over a million dollars. I want to do something kind of in the vein of Small Oven or some of these other brave folks, the, like, for example, the Wagging Dogs, tail, you know, Dog Park in North Hampton, of taking the time thoughtfully, working with the community to craft great legislation and having a wonderful example. At the same time, I really do want to urge the board to make progress on these, on zoning regulations because the longer we wait, the longer, you know, those of us who do want to apply for the right permitting and licenses have to wait. We have to either carry costs of rent, or we just have to guess, which could be a huge detriment to us. So there are lots of question marks you guys are making. I have to applaud you for making the progress you have done. You've been very brave to tackle this issue. I think it's, you've done a phenomenal job with the medical marijuana. I think we can still make progress in looking at where can we find affordable rent spaces and make it more equitable, not just to the big guys with the deep pockets, but to practitioners and local people. We were talking about the feel of this being a local agricultural community. So those are some of my immediate concerns, is trying to shore that up. Another issue that was mentioned at a previous meeting that I would also like to get further clarification on, and I can definitely liaise directly with our city planner, Jessica, but is specifically onsite consumption. Because whether or not we keep that in line with a alcohol facility or not, whether or not you have to consume onsite, buy onsite, and leave onsite or not are significant issues to be discussed. I would like to throw out there that folks use cannabis as well medically, and I would not have the same argument or same use said for alcohol. People are not using alcohol to help with their conditions. So it's, it's a difficult comparison when you're, when you're talking about, hey, I brought my medicine and I can't consume it in here. I can only buy something from a retail shop, but I can't, you know. So, I mean, I had hoped and dreamed of opening a bring-your-own-cannabis consumption in a safe, zoned area, very well protected from children, completely in line with any of the concerns city and our community has. But I do want us to consider the onsite consumption because I think it can be done well, tastefully, and hopefully to the majority's satisfaction. So I look forward to hearing from all of you. Thank you.
Apparently the law does not allow that.
Right.
I think you need to read the law.
I need to get the exact citation.
Because right now, the way that it's currently written in terms of consumption is that the consumption can only happen on the premise where it's actually sold. So we're not going to have the ability for individuals to BYOP and be similar to other, to Denver where that is an issue. The law right now is very clear that consumption can only happen. And I will tell you directly now, and we can have this conversation in my office as well, but you should also look very closely at how edibles are going to be regulated in terms of marked, in terms of potency. And so, you know, if a coffee house is something that you're thinking about, then you're going to need to be working with a manufacturer that's going to have all of those edibles that are prepackaged and labeled, and that, you know, the idea that we're going to have a recreational restaurant where somebody is going to be just serving chocolate cake that's infused with marijuana is not going to, is not going to fly under the way that the law is written right now, the way that I read it.
May I ask which laws, the state?
This is the State Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, merged with the House Bill 3818. So.
Jessica, I just have a question about that. I agree with everything you said except that last part, the idea about the restaurant. As long as they're purchasing it with, from a place that is a distributor.
If it's probably prepackaged and that, but I don't.
Then they could do that. They just can't.
I don't think they'll be able to make a chocolate cake in the back room of the restaurant and serve it because I don't think they're going to be, unless there's, unless the regulations sort of figure out how the potency or how the dosing can be equal. That, I sent you guys an article that was in the Boston Globe that was very interesting about some of the, some of the things that they're running into in Colorado when it comes to the edibles is like, you know, there's this big push for. it comes to the edibles is like, you know, there's this big push for sour gummies. Well, it's really hard to make sure that the dosing is equal when it comes to certain candies that they're making, or certain edibles that they're making. And so they've really have just found that, like, chocolate bars is the way that they can meet the regs. The regs are set. And if you go and you read the law, and you read the way that the edibles section is written, it's very closely to what I read in that Boston Globe article.
So, just to clarify the two things too, Jessica. So you, the onsite consumption, first of all, would have to be by a ballot initiative in the town, right?
No, no, that's just a way to get it through. Another way would be for us to put it into zoning.
I, I don't read it that way.
Well, I think that's unclear, and I think that's a gray area. And Dick Evans has one opinion, and our city attorney might have a different one. So, you know, I, I'm not, I'm not throwing full weight behind Dick Evans' opinion on how onsite consumption is, is renowned a lot.
Yeah, I'd want a legal opinion, not...
And I think honestly, that's a really big controversial topic for this board to just sort of get behind.
Can I ask why?
Because I think...
No, I wanna be specific about my question, so I don't leave you flailing the whole piece. I, I wanna know why you think it's in any way controversial legally. Where does it say legally that we can't put it into the zone?
I think it's a, I think that language is very gray. I think when it says that...
There is no language.
The language about the ballot, the town ballot initiative to for onsite consumption.
It shows a way to do it by town ballot, but there is no language anywhere.
You and I disagree. You and I will have to agree to disagree on this. And so I think that, that's part of the question, is, you know, do you wanna be the one that, that takes it on and then ends up in a, in the court case? I think I would go to the city attorney for opinion first, rather than put my weight behind Dick Evans, who wrote the law, personally. I'd go for a neutral, I'd go for a neutral party.
My thought would be that if you're drafting a statute and you're creating ways for this to be done, you would also say that a planning board or town can simply add this to their bylaws, and I don't think it does. So for me, it would be the reverse. It would be that if you don't have clear language that gives you that authority, I don't feel like I have that authority unless the, unless somebody who's reviewing the statute tells me that they think I do, and I can rely on that.
You're a lawyer, I respect your opinion. And obviously, I think going to the, to the city, uh, attorney and asking is, is, you know, is necessary. But is there any precedence that we have, just out of curiosity, I, I'm asking, uh, to this sort of thing that we could add into our zoning? I mean, can we add in something about, uh, campgrounds? I mean, it doesn't say, my point is, where's your precedence with this?
Well, I mean, my, just sort of a basic statutory principle would be that I'm looking at the language of it, right? So in general zoning, we have sort of broad powers of uses that we can create and can't create in specific areas. And there's other things like this, like airports or cell towers, right? Where it's a narrow statute that authorizes you to do something. And so I'm looking at that as a planning board member and a lawyer, and saying, my authority is what it says in here. I don't have something outside. So if I can find something in there that I think gives me authority to do that, I would be more comfortable. But I think with something like this, even if I think that I can find a way, I mean, I think I could represent a client who had done this and make an argument that there's language in there, but I'm not thrilled with that argument, and I certainly wouldn't wanna go out on that ledge without somebody giving me a professional opinion that I'm relying on that says that this is a, a power that we have as a planning board. Cause I think we're, we're circumscribed by our statutory authority, and I just saw, and I, I mean, when Dick Evans spoke last time and said that he thought there were other ways to do this, it was a novel reading to me. And I see what he's saying, but it, I wouldn't be comfortable doing that on my own initiative without someone saying that they think that that's...
Or unless there's case law that proves otherwise. If there's some other municipality that has gone this route...
But also, I think that it's a pretty, I mean, assuming that we have the support that we think we do, I don't think that it's outlandish to think that we would put a question to the community, and if there's support for it, then there is. I think that's like a very easy way to do it.
Thank you for that.
And so that's, I mean, that's just my personal opinion, not as a lawyer.
I put you on out there, and I'm grateful.
That's okay. No problem. Okay, anybody else? Salem, you lined up already?
Lined up.
Please. Go for it.
Salem Derby, city councillor. So I figured I would talk about the buffer, um, AKA the feel-good bubble. Because, you know, I think, I, I appreciate the deliberations you guys had. I feel like you're spot on. You know, I mean, there is no buffer that's gonna prevent someone who's bent on getting something, which is gonna have to be gotten in an illegal way. Because, you know, if you're in a school that we've identified, you're not twenty-one. So, uh, and I would argue that the more we bring this into the open, the, the more we're gonna take it off the black market, the, the more regulations that you have in place. I mean, when, you know, alcohol had, the drinking age came in, it made it more difficult to get alcohol, because you had to prove that you were of age. You know, so I, I think that that's an important point. I think, you know, a- as we look at the community input, you know, I, I just wanna say this as, um, as somebody who has lost people to alcoholism, somebody that has lost people to lung cancer, um, there's a false equivalency happening. And I think it's being reinforced by the letter that you got. There were some components of that which I found relatively offensive. Um, and as a taxpayer in East Hampton, um, I feel like it's important to, you know, recognize that I can stand at Nene's, and I can look at Maple School, and in my line of sight, less than probably seventy-five feet from the property of Maple School, I see advertisements for cigarettes on the side of the, the side of the store. And, and so then what happens is I, I try to, you know, equate like, well, why is it okay for that? Why are we having schools send us letters, um, about this? You know, and I think that that, to me, when we regulate tobacco signs, and when we create a buffer for bars and places where they sell alcohol, and everything's on equal footing, then I, you know, I'm game. I'm like, if, if we're treating things equally, um, and, and if you look at, you know, the amount of harm that can potentially be caused, it's not equal. And, and I would, I would challenge anybody to, alcohol is, um, you know, less harmful than cannabis. I would challenge anybody to make a, um, a point that is based on facts that tobacco is less harmful than cannabis. And, and I also, you know, wanna, the, the consumption onsite piece, I, I think that's gonna be something that needs to be flushed out. Uh, I think it's, I don't, I don't see any, I, I'm not afraid, I'm not afraid to, to be someone that is going to stand up and say, you know what, we think this makes sense in our community, and we're gonna write the regs that are gonna make this happen. I'm not afraid to do that. If they're thoughtful and they're respectful, which I think needs to happen, whether it's alcohol, tobacco, or cannabis. I think the thoughtful, respectful piece needs to be part of that. You know, so, long story short, what I think is that, you know, this can be a complicated issue, but we have to let go of the kind of feelings of the past, that somehow cannabis is gonna make East Hampton a bad place to live. Um, and that keeps getting reinforced. You know, in fact, um, not that long ago, the city council requested eight over-quota liquor licenses. There was no, I mean, there was a little bit of kind of, oh, we're gonna be bringing this to East Hampton, but, you know, there wasn't multiple letters being sent to the city council. I don't think you guys received any letters. You know, so I, I, I think it's important to recognize, you know, how people are characterizing the people that use cannabis, and using that as a wedge to say that we don't want that here. We don't want that kinda person here. Well, I'd take exception to that. I think that kinda person could be perfectly great person, perfectly great parent, a perfectly great lawyer, or doctor, or whatever. Right? So I just wanna make sure that we keep releasing those notions of the past, that somehow this is gonna make you do crazy stuff. You know, somehow Reefer Madness is back, right? People are gonna smoke marijuana, and everybody's gonna be running down the street naked.
I love that.
So, and, and if you look at it empirically, you'll find that I'm right. And, and so, you know, I, I would just say, from the last meeting, I, I won't take up any more, any more of your time, but from the last meeting, I did say how prohibition has its roots and racist origins. And I, and it didn't really occur to me to send forward that stuff to you, but I did. I did tonight. So Jessica's gonna forward that stuff to you if you wanna look into it a little bit more. So I appreciate your time.
Is that a two hundred, a vote for a two-hundred-foot buffer?
Two-hundred-foot feel-good buffer.
Okay.
I like the feel. I like that.
Feel-good buffer.
Anybody else? Comments, questions, thoughts?
Uh, my name is Adam Stein, uh, sixteen Oliver Street in East Hampton. I teach eighth grade science at Whitebrook. Uh, as a teacher, I am not afraid of, of, of marijuana being around. I, I do wholeheartedly agree with the sentiments that you, that you said. And I feel it bears that I just add some support to that, that we as a, as a human race have normalized intoxicants since we were, since our first civilization, and we certainly do that with, with, with tobacco and alcohol. And I find that, just like you, as, or if not more offensive. And the holding them to the same standard, to me, is, is wholly counterproductive. And I think that, I also lived, I did my master's degree in the Netherlands for two and a half years, so I have some experience living in a place where they have legalized, well, I guess it's not technically legal, but they have normalized the use of marijuana, and there are no advertisements, there's no street signs. And they seem to be getting along very well, having that system. And, and I, and signage to me is, um, that's where, that's where the, the key lies. It's not about distance. Again, we have normalized the use of intoxicants as a society. I watch tons of Sportsline TV, and every other ad is for alcohol. You see signs for, big billboards for cigarettes. These kids are smart. I teach eighth grade students. They know about marijuana, they know about tobacco, they know about alcohol. And just because it's two-hundred feet, five-hundred feet, a thousand feet, they still know about it, and if they wanna do it really bad, they're not gonna go to the store and get it, because it's illegal and we card them, but they're gonna go out and get it somewhere. So I fully support, well, the two-hundred-foot feel-good buffer.
Feel-good in there.
Anybody else?
Can the public have access to these maps at all?
Um, I can put them up on the website.
Oh, you're great.
I agree. I think you have a Power One going there.
Mr. Boyle?
I want to hear for the, um, zoning that you're doing at the end, which I wish you did in the beginning, but I'll be the stick in the mud. I spoke last time, no one else was here, was that a different meeting, wasn't a public hearing? And I'm, I am accepting the normalization, but like I said last time to you guys, if you can err, err on the side of the kids. I mean, maybe it is a feel-good buffer, maybe it is a way of saying, you know, uh, working around our hypocrisy our society has, but when you do your regulations, I, I mean, I don't care if you have a, I, I, I think it's, I think the law's crap, but I don't really care if you have a zero buffer or a thousand-foot buffer. It's here, the normalization is here, but marijuana is not good for young people. You know, and that's just the way it is. And I'm not gonna, you know, you can say what you want, but you know, I have, I, I know a person dying of lung cancer, and it's cause, cause, cause no one's gonna tell her what to do all her life about smoking. No one's gonna tell her what to do. And even now, she's defiant. Well, too bad, she's gonna die next month. You know? And the boy that I coached last year in hockey, he's not playing this year. Okay? So it's going down, and his string of bad luck is increasing. But last year, when he caught, caught his pot, what did he say to me? I told you last time, what did he say? It's legal now. He was only fifteen years old. So my point is, if you're gonna err, just err on the side of the kids. It is being normalized, it is coming. We have our tattoo pollers, we have our guy smoking, uh, dope behind the tattoo pollers. You go to Amy's at lunchtime, go out and park your car, and they're smoking dope, and guys are selling it, out in broad sight now, because it's legal. It's coming, it's here, just do your best on protecting the kids. That's all I can say.
Thank you. Yep.
Uh, my name's Rob Brandon. I live in Leeds, it's right outside of Northampton. I'm in support of the two-hundred-foot buffer. My experience with, uh, marijuana is not personal use, uh, but I had a grandfather that died last, not this last January, but the January prior to that. And, you know, it had been picking up speed already in terms of treating people with, you know, illnesses, or people with cancer, people with, uh, you know, dealing with chemo and stuff like that. And he, it basically took like the last twenty years of his life away. I basically figured out a way to make food for him that had marijuana, and he went from not eating, sleeping, and being a miserable person, to getting an appetite and, you know, sleeping and laughing with my grandmother again before his life. I am on the side of, you know, protect the kids, because I think it's important to keep younger people away from using something that could potentially like hinder their mental development. But at the same time, it's like someone else said, like, if they want it, they're gonna get it. And I feel like the, the more, you know, I'm thirty-three now, but growing up, the more people told me I couldn't do something, the more I wanted to do it. So the more restriction you put on something, the more younger people are gonna want to rebel and get what they want. I think that keeping everything, you know, regulated, which is why everyone's here, obviously, is super important. But I feel like the people that don't understand, you know, the, the flower and the product and what it does, really need to do some research and understand, like, what it actually does. And there isn't a lot of research right now, ultimately. Like, there is still a lot of research that needs to be done. So, you know, the, the book isn't written on exactly what it does, but for the most part, the potential for, you know, what it does medically, and how it helps people physically and mentally, it's there. You know, it's just something that more, more money needs to be invested into that science so that people can understand. And I think that, on that side of things, uh, education as well is super important. Like, we need to educate younger people and the elderly people that don't understand, that are from that generation, that marijuana is terrible, like, it's this super awful drug that kills people. That needs to be something that is also, like, invested in time, money, energy, manpower, education, so that people know, like, what exactly is going on here, and what, what this is gonna mean for them in their future. So that's all I gotta say about that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Sure.
Just to help you guys keep the numbers up, I'm in favor of the two-hundred-foot ordinance as well. Uh, I don't think it makes a difference if kids wanna smoke marijuana, they're gonna get marijuana, it's been that way since time began.
At least since the sixties.
Since at least sixty, sixty-seven, if I remember correctly. Forgot a lot of that stuff. So it's gonna happen anyway, and I think the important thing is, is I don't wanna see East Hampton become stone or heaven, because we've got signage all over the place with marijuana leaves, and I think that's the issue. That's, and, and I agree with that other fellow that said that that's the issue too. But I think we need to understand that in, in the Netherlands, prostitution is legal, mari- well, is allowed, marijuana is allowed. They have less sex crimes in the Netherlands than they do here. And marijuana, when I was over there, didn't seem to be corrupting society at all. So I think we need to really normalize it and, uh, but certainly control it, so we don't make the town look like, uh, Ada Ashbury.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm gonna be really brief. I just wanna clarify for the record that I am in no way in favor of children using marijuana. And that, in fact, you know, I think I do, am a firm believer that it should be regulated just like alcohol, be twenty-one plus, and it should be, you know, highly regulated. And, and I think, going back to the character, I think the character is important, um, being respectful, and, and, and not, you know, being blatant, I think those are kind of some things. Uh, one other thing that I wanted to say before I let you guys go, um, is sobriety tests. Uh, a lot of people have talked about that, and I just wanna say, there is such a thing as a field sobriety test. And what does a field sobriety test measure? Measures your ability to drive. So I don't see a need to reinvent the wheel. If you're, if you're not, um, and if you can pass a field sobriety test, you're not intoxicated. And so if someone is under the influence of marijuana and can pass a field sobriety test, and I guess a lot of people have talked about this, and I, I'm always kinda baffled by this, what's, what is a field sobriety test for then? Other than to determine whether you can drive or not? And so if you can pass that, then you could probably drive.
And so if you can pass that then, you could probably drive. So, just wanted to say that, 'cause I know that that was mentioned. Thank you.
I will just say, and I don't do anything in that field, but I do think that the field sobriety test is like used as an indicator before you give like a blood alcohol test.
But the blood alcohol test just got recalled.
Well, there are issues with that, right, but I don't, but I don't think the field sobriety test is like admissible in court or anything, so I think it's, it's all, it's tricky for everybody.
They're using it too. Springfield's been using it quite a bit.
Hi, again, sorry, I just had a question too, as a, as a business owner coming in. I'm completely in favor of having, you know, like frosted windows, very discreet, tasteful design. My question would also be, how would I, as a business owner, let them know where I am? And so maybe when you're writing the regulations in terms of signs, of course I want people to be able to find me, I don't wanna be a speakeasy and they have to come out back and just know I'm there. So are there tasteful ways that I could display either the name or somehow a sign that's acceptable to everybody, including the state? I just wanted to kinda throw that out there in consideration.
Yeah.
Yeah, there is. There, I mean, the, the Green Cross has been the, kind of the symbol that's happening for the, for any sort of retail or, or any establishment.
That seems to be the most popular in the states across the country, is the Green Cross.
Yep.
Okay, so...
Can we maybe lock in the two hundred, take a vote on that, to add it in?
I mean, in the same way, I think that we've done everything in here that it's sort of...
Well, it's gonna go to city council after this, and it's not like it's final now, but we open here.
Right, but to put it in our draft, yeah, I mean, I think we can do that if somebody wants to make a motion.
I motion to modify our draft to have a two hundred foot buffer from educational facilities as detailed as possible.
Second?
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining?
Abstaining.
Chet, did I get your vote?
Yes, I got it. You got my vote.
Okay.
I didn't have anyone on it, but...
All right.
I don't know, did you abstain, Harry?
Yeah, Harry abstained.
Did you, Chet, did you abstain too?
Chet voted aye.
Okay.
Aye, aye, aye.
Okay, so Jessica, there's a lot of questions in here on the technical, I don't know the things that...
I don't think we've got...
No, 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 I don't wanna deal with them now, and I think some of them are things that are more sort of theoretical and things to think about, 'cause we're waiting for the cannabis control commission to actually tell us what to do.
It's just things that pop in my head as I breathe.
Yeah.
I thought they were good things, so I just wanna comment, your research was excellent, the materials you're providing are really good. Yeah, fantastic.
Thank you.
So I guess, I don't know if people had a chance to look at some of those other ordinances in Oregon, Washington, and as Jessica said, they're all heavily influenced by the state laws there.
If I could direct you, if you, if you had limited time and there was one thing you could do, so the, I think that there was the marijuana regulation in Washington State, and I put into the Dropbox, there's actually a, a link that you can click on, and it's an interactive site, and the gold mine that I found was this interactive map of all of these communities in Washington State with circles equivalent to their population size, so you can look at big communities, small communities, and when you hover over the dot, it gives you the population, and then when you click, there's a link that you can click on and go directly to their recreational marijuana regulations. And there's like, there's a lot of them. So I kinda just started looking for communities that were population side, and that's what I started to pull was somewhere in the sixteen thousand population range.
Is that where you got the lane code from?
Yes. No, lane, I think I just kinda Googled and found it. This is for Washington State, so...
Maybe in our next meeting, we can have looked at some of those and discuss some things that jumped out at us, 'cause we've talked before about making sure that nothing slips through the cracks, and that's gonna be...
And this, and this document is super comprehensive, marijuana regulation in Washington State, land use and zoning law. I mean, it's like eight pages of just land use things to think about. So this, if you had to focus your energy on anything, go to this.
And the other thing I was just thinking of, that we didn't just talk about was the buffer, but the other part of the buffer we have in the medical is buffer between two facilities.
Yeah.
And it was the same distance, and so that, first of all, I think that's a totally different interest that you're looking at, but I think the sort of concept of trying to avoid a marijuana district kinda thing, and so, that, I don't know if that's something we, we wanna think about or treat differently, but we should think about how to think about that and talk about it the next meeting.
That's valid.
So that might be another thing to make sure we discuss.
You know, also, like when I Google marijuana in, you go to different states, just Google marijuana, my poor computer goes berserk because of this. There's just so much information out there. Where does it all come from?
The last comment you made, and I know we wanna talk about it later, I'm just gonna put this point in, 'cause that's who I am. I, I think that the limitations we talked about based on the alcohol limits and the small number just accounts for that, and we wouldn't need any additional buffer between spaces because if you're, you're limited in the number you can have anyway. It's more than enough.
I don't know.
But are we, don't you have to decide to limit by the number? I don't think we are limited right now.
So that's by a vote?
I think it limits the planning board saying that you can limit it by number, but only to no more than, you can't go below twenty percent.
Okay, it's the minimum.
But that's a number that we set. I don't think there is a limit by law.
Right.
Although Jessica also raises that in some states and in the original medical version, there was a county limit for licenses, so that may very well be the case here too, who knows? But I think we can still do that, so, but whether the buffer for the schools is the same or whatever, I think that that's worth thinking about.
Good point, thank you.
Okay, so, we can continue this till our next meeting, I guess?
Yes.
Keep it on the agenda?
We need the date of that in order to continue it, right?
Uh, it's the nineteenth?
Nineteenth.
I motion to continue the discussion for recreational marijuana zoning to September nineteenth, is that what you said?
Yes, exactly.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Okay, but, last item, Mr. Boyle's been very patient, so...
Oh, yeah.
We have a letter from the EDIC regarding live workspace and downtown business, and I'm just gonna give you the floor if you wanna come up and explain what it is.
David Boyle, EDIC chairman. Alls that is, is an attempt to, a small attempt to create some more housing in town. The EDIC's been talking about housing in various ways, and this is the, the first thing that we've come up with, some kind of consensus. We don't foresee the downtown business being flooded or inundated with work lift spaces there's, because there's other considerations to consider such as building code and this and that. Not by us, but it came across us, you know, there's been some talk, and, and we're in no way in any communication with the property owner, but the example is the Hurry Skurry Building that comes up sometimes, it's like, what can we do with that? I'm not speaking for the owner, we have not spoke to the owner.
A Hurry Skurry Building?
But we just thought that...
It's across from the Button Building?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, a, a building like that, maybe, you could, you know, if an artist came in or a craftsperson and they, it could be, the front would be retail and, or a commercial, and then, and then the person who had commercial, whoever lives in the space has to be associated with the commercial. And so we just wanted to throw that out to you, you know, the EDIC wants to have some other ideas for, to help increase housing down the road, but this was our baby step, and that's all I have to say.
So, and I thought this was interesting, and I just wanted to clarify, 'cause it's a pretty short letter, and I...
Do you wanna read it, do you wanna read it into the record?
I think we should, just for the, also for the...
So this, this is from the EDIC of East Hampton. Dear Planning Board and City Council, the EDIC recently has been discussing the state of housing in East Hampton at several meetings, and from those discussions, one idea currently has achieved consensus for a proposal. The EDIC proposes that the city ordinance be amended to allow residential on the first floor in the following manner. In the downtown business zone, existing or new construction, first floor residential space may be allowed as a work-live space, where the street front portion of the space is commercial and the rear portion is residential by the same occupant. The residential space shall be subordinate to the commercial space and not exceed forty-five percent of the total space. The intent is to make some space available that may be of interest to an artist or craftsperson, but not necessarily limited to that. There is no intent to make two spaces occupied that have no connection to each other. Please consider this for public hearing so that the appropriate discussion can take place as to its merits. So Dave, so it's the same owner or occupant, but it's limited to the first floor, and I'm wondering why that was done?
Well, in downtown business right now, you, you can't have residential on the first floor.
So, okay, but so it would be...
You can already do it on the second floor, so it wouldn't be adjusted.
But, and you can't do the work part, 'cause you wouldn't, you'd be on the second floor. I'm getting it. So, and subordinate size-wise as well, forty-five percent of the space.
You know, I mean, just a little bit of history to back up. Prior to the nineteen ninety-six zoning, in, in the previous zoning, the nineteen seventy-two zoning, there was really no mention of, well, downtown was, was zoned general, general industrial a lot of it, and there was no, there was no limitation on, on first floor residences. So when a recession came, not any particular one, if there were some vacancies as we went through change, you know, some first floor residences opened up, like, you know, there's a few, there was one left on Cod Street, there was a few others here and there. So nineteen ninety-six, the zoning changed, or it was overhauled, and they, and they eliminated that, 'cause they wanted to keep commercial for commercial, obviously, to promote foot traffic and that, and, which I think is fine, you know, we're not, I'm not, I don't think we were really trying to change that. But now, in two thousand seventeen, the nature of retail, the, the broad sense is changing, obviously, in a lot of ways, and, you know, we have some vacancies, some of it's due to churn, some of it's due to recession, but, you know, if we're an artist community, well, we are an artist community, maybe this could be a way to enhance it a little bit. You know, there was discussion, it took us a while, you know, the, some people really felt strongly about not, excuse me, bastardizing commercial. And then, but thought there might be some merit if, you know, and I don't really think, you know, if this was passed, I don't, first of all, I don't expect it to be passed in the way it was written, that's just a starting point.
Yeah.
But if it was, I, I, I just don't foresee, I mean, I think if five places ever happened, that would be like, wow. I just don't, you know, I just think it's another tool in a toolbox.
Yeah.
And it gives the EDIC a little bit of experience and trying to be a little more proactive with economic development slash housing.
Jessica, are you aware of similar bylaws in other places that we could look at?
No, but what's interesting right now is the, the bill that is in the Senate for zoning reform has a provision in it in regards to artist zoning specifically. And I have some issues with the way it's currently drafted, because the way that it's drafted is defining an artist by somebody who makes the majority of their income through their art. So, we know that that's not necessarily the case here in East Hampton, that we have a lot of people...
Or anywhere.
Or anywhere, right. So I actually sent them a very long email, the folks at Smart Growth America, who are kind of taking the lead from the planner side, and saying, this is all fine and good, but you really need to look at how this, and it's only like two paragraphs, you know, it's, it's artist housing and one paragraph that is the standards for it. So, you know, I kind of was like...
Is this the zoning reform bill that just sits there every year?
Yeah, but this one's got a little bit more traction, actually.
Really?
I say that every year, yeah.
I was gonna say.
This one actually has some level of consensus between the home builders.
Another, another piece of cardboard underneath the tire, just a little bit more...
Well, this one has consensus between the home builders, mass municipal association, and planners, so I think it's, it's getting more and more closer to where it needs to be, but anyway.
All right, it's getting late, but Mr. Gardner's hand shot up. Do you wanna say something on this?
Should I go up there?
Sure, let's, let's stick with the formality, please.
No, I'm also a member of the EDIC and was party to the discussion on all of that, and actually, just maybe wanted to just throw out there that, just came through observation. We have empty storefronts, street level downtown. I've seen businesses come and go, some of them had been, ideas that the business owner thought would really fly and pay the eight hundred to a thousand or whatever it is for rent these days in those storefronts. They also, on top of that, would have to maintain rent or ownership of a home somewhere in town or keep driving to town. So, for me, this seemed like, some of the spaces are a bit large for some of the uses. Preserving the commercial space on the sidewalk means you have the storefronts that are, well, they're storefronts. We already have people in, in a lot of communities that, that actually live in the places where they work. We have it in Eastworks, for instance, they live there, they work there. It just seemed like to bring that downtown and maybe fill up the storefronts, make it possible, make it affordable for people starting up a business. From a practical level, retail is a hard business. If you're just standing there waiting for somebody to walk through the door all day, that's difficult. If you do internet sales at the same time, that's, that's, that's better, that's probably smarter. If you live there, that's, works even better. So, anyway, that's, that's kinda where it came from, it's just watching the turnover, especially on Union Street, and wanting to see those storefronts alive, you know.
Great, excellent. I agree, I think it's great.
David's, what is the attendance at, at the EDIC right now? How many members are there?
What we have, nine or ten?
We have one vacancy.
Yeah.
Our attendance is spot on.
Pretty high.
That's fantastic.
Great.
I just wanted to ask that so that if you did have a vacancy, you could put it on camera. And also, and also, thank you for looking at ways to fill up those spaces, I think it's really important, what you guys are doing. I personally would love to see this on our agenda.
I think it's a great idea. I think we also, we just gave Jessica a lot to do, I don't know what timeline you have.
Yeah, I mean, the only...
We understand, and Joe's made that kinda, kinda, Joe McCoy made that kinda clear, that it'll be a while.
I don't know necessarily that it will or won't be a while, in fact, it may be, I mean...
So the board just needs to prioritize what they wanna work on, and then I'll set the agenda based on what your priorities are. How about that? So, if, so you wanna do marijuana the next meeting on the nineteenth, right? And I don't, we don't have any active permits right now?
Could you rephrase that last statement?
What?
That we wanna do marijuana on the nineteenth.
Well...
You wanna address marijuana zoning? That's not entirely untrue. It's that time of the night.
You're only Jim wants to do it sooner. So, we, so we've got that on the nineteenth scheduled, I don't know if we've got any other business, so we could add this on as a point of discussion if you'd like, or you've got the campground, so like, what do you...
Oh, yeah.
I kinda feel like we owe, and I don't wanna, I think this is important, but I feel like we own it, we owe it to the community that's been putting time into this to the little campground.
I agree, and I think that...
But afterwards.
Well, I also think that, yeah, I think...
I mean, it could be a pretty, it could be a pretty simple ordinance, to be honest.
It sounds straightforward.